We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today, Tuesday, August 20th, 2019 at 6:31 PM. Is Rabbi Michael Simon here from Temple Beth Kodesh? Not seeing him. Commissioner McCray, would you lead us in an invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Christina Romulus?
Thank you. I was standing for Rabbi tonight. Thank you. Let us bow to the creed and make of all mankind. Father, here we are once more again, coming before you in the homeless manner that we know how. As we partake in the business of this great city, we ask that you would lead us and guide us in the way that you would have us to go. And when we make decisions, let us be cognizant of what we say and how we say it. In your name we do pray. Amen.
Amen.
My pleasure. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Stephen B. Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Justin Katz.
Here.
Commissioner Matt McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Christina Romulus.
Present.
Commissioner Ty Pincirga.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
All right. Any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
I have a citation that's been distributed to all of the board members. I would like to add that under announcements.
I'd like to move that to new business. This is the first time I've heard of it, and so we don't necessarily have a citation protocol. And so, you know, I don't know the nexus between Boynton Beach and the person that we're giving the citation. This is the first time I've heard it. And so, before I sign my name, I'd like to get a little bit more information. Normally, I get a head start before. So, I'd like to put it on under new business, if that's all right.
Mayor, I would oppose that simply because there is family members that are here in recognition of this citation, and I wouldn't want them to have to wait all of until new business to get this recognition. So, I'm fine with discussing it, but I still would like to just have it under announcements.
So, we'll put that under E for announcements. As for announce, and then also, I know that we have a new deputy Parks and Recs director. I'd like to introduce him afterwards as also an announcement.
Before we go any further, it seems like my mic is the only one that's working because I got a big mouth. You all need to speak a little louder, please. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else to, on additions or deletions of the agenda?
Some move.
I'll second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Informational items by the members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor Katz.
None at this time.
Commissioner McCray.
I have nothing to disclose nor any information tonight at this point, but I will speak later. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus.
Nothing to disclose. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pincirga.
I have nothing to disclose at this time.
All right. Well, on August 7th, I attended the Lord's Place for their grand opening of the new Mann Place, W A N, M A N N. That local nonprofit received a million-dollar grant to redo the 30 residential units for men coming off of incarceration and homelessness. I attended the Community Caring Center's seminar and learned about the gig economy. On August 8th, I attended the Boynton Beach YMCA's summer career, summer day camp extravaganza. On August 14th, I attended VJ Day. And then, I drove up to Orlando for the Florida League of Mayors Roundtable Discussion. On the 15th, in the morning, I attended the Florida League of Mayors Business Meeting. I attended the Florida League of Cities Transportation Intergovernment Relations. We approve language regarding affordable homes and transportation funding for this upcoming legislative session. In addition, I attended a National League of Cities Seminar for Real, which stands for Race Equity in Leadership, Building Racial Equity in Your City. On the 16th, I attended a couple other conference seminars, Smart Cities, What Is Your Strategy? General session where I got to hear from Governor DeSantis and General Mark McQueen, who had to, as the city manager of Panama City, after Hurricane Michael hit. There's a seminar getting most from our lobby, getting most from your lobbyists, and I'm glad that our lobbyist is here, and improving your local economy, talking about opportunity zones. On the 17th, I attended the Gold Coast Breakfast. On the 19th, I went to the Palm Beach County Housing Authority's meeting. It was their audit, and they did have some significant deficiencies and material weaknesses, but they are looking to move stronger, and we have a tentative meeting on August 30th with our CRA and city staff to help build some public housing in Boynton Beach. Later on that afternoon, I attended the Transportation Planning Agency Transition Steering Committee. This morning, I was at the Board of County Commissioners meeting, where I was very pleased to see that there was a four-to-three vote for the CRA, for the CRA for Palm Springs. And I met with the Director and Deputy Director of the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council. And they mentioned to me that Lori, that anytime that you need an economic study, you should contact them. And that is it for me. Is there any other informational items before we move on? Seeing none? Our first announcement is to present a certificate of achievement to three recent career online high school graduates that earned their high school diplomas from the library's online program. I'm going to read your names out first and then come by with the plaques. Our first award for their diploma is Jill Petruniti, Maria Copeland, and Landery Sheriston. Is anyone here to accept? All right, yes.
Hi, Jeanne Taylor, Assistant Library Director. I just want to say congratulations to our graduates. These are our seven graduates now in this high school program. It's a wonderful program. We're happy as a library to be able to offer it. There are only three requirements. You have to be over 19, you have to live in the city, and you have to have a library card. We can help you with that. So, if you know anybody who still needs to get their high school diploma, I have brochures and I've left them up here. Help yourself or come talk to me about it. Thanks.
Our next announcement is for Valerie Matthew. President and founder of Chariots of Love invites the City Commission and the public to the Izel Hester Jr. Community Center on August 25th at noon to celebrate the 99th and 100 recipients receiving their new wheelchairs.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Debbie Majors, grants and ADA Coordinator. It's a pleasure to introduce you to Valerie Matthew. She is with Chariots of Love, as you mentioned, and she's a member of our city inclusion support team and is doing some amazing things in our community and beyond. And she's got a very special event this weekend she's going to tell us about.
Thank you, Debbie. Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity. I just want to share with Chariots of Love is a nonprofit charity in Lake Worth, Florida, and we provide free wheelchairs and free wheelchair repairs for any mobility-challenged child in the U.S. to the age of 21. Anything they need for their wheelchairs. We will be presenting our 100th wheelchair this Sunday, and you're welcome. These are the pictures of Nicholas and Evan, and we also have a little girl will be receiving our number 101 wheelchair at this event. It's open to the public. We invite you to join us. And if you know any child in this country that needs a wheelchair or needs a repair or needs an accessory for their wheelchair, they can contact chariotsoflove.org, and we can provide that for them. We're 100% nonprofit. We're funded by grants and public monetary donations, and we have zero salaries, zero compensation. We're a true nonprofit, and this is all volunteer. And we're just helping children in need in our country, and we appreciate your support, and we'd love to have you come out and witness this miracle. We're changing lives of children in need. Thank you.
And Debbie Majors, would you come back to the podium to introduce Lisa Puglisi, founder and CEO of Love Serving Autism, who announced the start of the Love Serving Autism Program at the city's tennis center, beginning on Saturday, September 7th, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Thank you, Mayor. Lisa is a little under the weather today, so we're going to have Stephanie Soplop, the Recreation and Assessment Specialist, make the announcement.
All right.
Thank you, Debbie. Good evening. I am Stephanie Soplop, the Recreation and Assessment Specialist, and I'm very excited to tell you about a new program starting at the tennis center in September. Love Serving Autism is a local nonprofit organization that provides tennis instruction to children with autism spectrum disorders. They're going to be starting on September 7th at the Boynton Beach Tennis Center. I noticed that Love Serving Autism had programs all over Palm Beach County, and I just thought, why haven't we invited them to join us? So, we're partnering with them, allowing them to use our tennis center. We are trying to get the word out about the program. So, to register, you just go to loveservingautism.org and click on registration. You'll see all the other locations. They are still accepting participants and also volunteers. Volunteers, they do provide high school, community service for high school for volunteers. So, again, it's starting. I have flyers up here for you. It's starting Saturday, September 7th. It'll be from 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. There is a small fee of $60 for all six classes, but that goes towards the materials and the instructor. They use visual aids and adaptive equipment to help children not only gain tennis instruction, but they also improve their communication skills and social skills as well. So, we're very excited and looking forward to that. We just want to help get the word out about it. And we also have one more quick announcement before we're done.
If you haven't seen it on social media or the news, you have got to go check out the movie Peanut Butter Falcon. It is introducing Jack Gottsman, who is a young man from the city of Boynton Beach. He is a member of the Gold Coast Down Syndrome Organization. There are five shows on Friday, which is the opening night, August 23rd. It's a PG-13 movie. It will be at Cinemark Boynton on Congress Avenue. It's also playing in Royal Palm and Boca Raton. And Joe Morgenstern of the Wall Street Journal quote, "Go expecting the best, and you will come out smiling." It's a great movie. Everybody, I encourage you to go see it. Thank you. Thank you.
We have the following September 2019 meeting. September 30th, Commission meeting moved to Thursday, September 5th at 6:30 PM at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse to hold our first public budget workshop for fiscal year 2019-20. Special Commission meeting on Tuesday, September 10th, 2019 at 6:00 p.m. at Intracoastal Park Clubhouse to adopt final fire assessment for fiscal year 2019-20. This meeting will be held immediately before the CRA meeting. Regular Commission meeting on Tuesday, September 17, 2019 at 6:30 PM, Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. And so, now we'll go to the citation. Commissioner Romulus, you know, I know that we don't have any sort of citation policy because no one's ever, you know, requested, just brought it up on the board. And so, normally, I've done ones for people that have turned 100 years old or have a nexus to Boynton Beach. And so, can you please explain why we're giving this citation?
So, in the audience, I have Ms. Maude Casagnol, who is the wife of the firstborn son of Lieutenant Raymond Casagnol. And I'll read the citation because I believe the citation itself is relevant in terms of the nexus that you're asking for, Mayor. Lieutenant Raymond Casagnol was born in Port-au-Prince on September 20th, 1920. In 1942, he enrolled in the Haitian Army and was an airplane mechanic. In 1943, he was one of the first Haitian men to attend training at the Tuskegee Army Field in Alabama and became a Tuskegee Airman. Blatant segregation was in full swing in those days, something Lieutenant Casagnol and his comrades were unaccustomed to in Haiti. Lieutenant Casagnol had to ride in blacks-only transportation or had to sit in front of, in the back of trains. He later wrote in his autobiography that he avoided going off of Tuskegee Army Training Field and off the campus because he couldn't stand to be made to feel inferior and the humiliation that came with it. Lieutenant Casagnol endured these trials and graduated from the rigorous training in Tuskegee. He paved the way as part of the first class of graduates and other Haitian pilots who were recruited after his graduation. He went on to be a pilot and an entrepreneur and owned various businesses in Haiti before returning to Alabama and eventually retiring in Florida. He is believed to be the only living Haitian Tuskegee Airman and has been honored with a medal from Congress for his brave contributions to World War II and this country as a Tuskegee Airman gun pilot in Italy. Now, therefore, Mayor, or myself, or whomever would like to use that authority, would like to recognize with this citation Lieutenant Raymond Casagnol. He will be turning 100 next year. His wife and his family are locals in this area. And being that we have a large community of Haitian Americans here, it's important for us to know our history. It's important for us to understand the contributions that we've made to this country. The freedoms that we all enjoy today are due to the sacrifice that these men and women contributed to this country. And the fact that he is the last living Tuskegee Airman is something that I believe is noteworthy. So, this is the reason why I brought this up. It was a request by Jane Marcelle, who is part of our Sister Cities Board. She is also here with the fellow member of Mr. Lieutenant Casagnol.
And so, you know, the reason why, you know, I was at the Palm Beach County Board of Commissioners, and Commissioners are allowed to give out citations and proclamations. Is that something we want to allow now as this board?
I take no issue with that, Mayor.
Because, you know, the, yes?
Thank you. You know, Commissioner Romulus, with due respect, I'm just saying, I know you don't have a problem with it because you brought it in. But let me go ahead and say what I need to say. I'm just saying, you know, citations, I'm just saying, you know, I have no problem with it either, but I have a problem with things being dropped off to us at the last minute. I'm just, as a citation supposed to have been given, I'm just saying, I think we all should have been made of abreast about this citation. I'm in favor of the citation, but I think that things need to be done decent and in order. And I feel like if anybody signed this citation, we have the mayor of this city, and it's coming from this city, that the mayor of this city will sign this citation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anyone disagree with Commissioner McCray?
Just to clarify, the city manager will also chime in on this. This was a request that came in on Friday, and I've been working with the city clerk and the city manager to get this on the agenda. It should have been on the agenda, but according to individuals who didn't feel that way, it was not. So, this was not meant to be dropped on anybody's lap last minute. It just happened to, somebody didn't want it to be on the agenda. So, we're going to get that, I don't want to delve too deep into that, but this is the issue.
All right. Yes, Vice Mayor.
So, just for future reference, I'd make a recommendation to all board members that, like any agenda item, we would place on the agenda if you have citations or proclamations. I understand sometimes they're timely and have like a specific date, but in the interest of not putting stuff on at the last second per Commissioner McCray, just like everything else, I don't think anyone would object to putting it on as a future agenda item or noticing it as soon as possible for the next subsequent meeting.
Yeah. The, you know, if he was born in September, you'd normally give the citation on his birth month. So, I'm going to absolutely sign it, but we're going to use this as a learning experience for future citations and proclamations.
I'd like to invite Ms. Marcelle and the family that are present to come up, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
On behalf of my father-in-law, Raymond Casagnol, I say thank you. Before coming here, I called him and asked him if he had something special to say. He said, "My life was not extraordinary. I don't know why I'm receiving this, but if that can serve to the new generation of Haitians, if my life can serve as an example for them, I will gladly. I would think that everything was worth it." Thank you. That's all he said.
And now, we have our Parks and Rec new deputy director.
Yes. Mayor. We have a new member of our team who's our Assistant Recreation and Parks Director, Casey Young, who joins us from 15 years of experience in the public sector in a variety of local cities. In his career, he brings with him a master's of science degree in athletic administration as well as a bachelor's degree of science in sports administration. He's a certified Parks and Recreation Professional and a member of the National Park and Recreation Association, and we are delighted to have him aboard. Casey has done some really good work in his career, and we're just thrilled to have him as part of our team.
All right.
Mayor?
Leave much for you to say.
No, not really. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, Casey Young, Recreation and Parks Assistant Director. Just want to thank all the department heads, all the staff for welcoming me aboard last week. I'm really excited to be part of the city of Boynton Beach, and also, I look forward to working in this community. So, thank you.
Right. Before you take your seat, you receive your degrees from what university? I'm just saying, because the last person we had has the University of Miami on their door. I'd like to know.
It's not University of Miami, but I received my bachelor's degree from Morgan State University in Baltimore, Maryland, and my master's degree from Nova Southeastern.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to say welcome to Florida, not Florida, but welcome to the city of Boynton. And it's going to be a great thing, especially in District 2. We're looking forward to working with you, sir.
Thank you.
And I do have another proclamation. City of Boynton Beach, whereas August 26th, 2019 marks the 99-year anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, and whereas the 19th Amendment, although not grounding the rights to vote to all women, specifically women of color, represents a major milestone in the women's suffrage movement, granting 26 million citizens the right to vote in 1920 after a decades-long campaign and movement. And whereas the deep legacy of black suffragists and their fight alongside their white counterparts has been minimized or completely omitted from many historical accounts, and whereas the state of Florida was the 43rd state to ratify the 19th Amendment on May 13th, 1969, and whereas the right to vote is among the most hallowed of American freedoms, and whereas the United States of America is experiencing an unprecedented number of women spanning all faiths, races, and ethnicity, and political persuasion seeking public office at all levels of government, in a testament to the political power of women. Now, therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the 26th day of August, 2019, as Women's Equality Day. Do we have someone who would like to accept this proclamation? Next, we'll move on to public audience. Individual speakers will be limited to three-minute presentations. Please state your name and address for the record.
Former Mayor Woodrow Hay, 427 Northwest Fifth Avenue, Boynton Beach, Florida. Very short and sweet for the record, and I'd just like to announce that I will be running for District 2 Commission seat after my Commissioner, Mike McCray, finishes in 2020. So, I just wanted to make it official and let everybody know because the question is being asked. I am running, and I solicit, invite, welcome, all support in whatever way that you can. Thank you, and I look forward to filling such big shoes.
My name is Lynn Leverett, and we were here a couple of weeks ago, and at this time, we just wanted to acknowledge the Commission and the city of Boynton Beach for their generous donation to our youth conference, and we would like to do that with a small token of just thank you. So, our young ladies are going to come around and thank you. It was a weekend filled with conferences and teaching, financial investment, social justice, also leadership. And our little ones, our teacher is sitting back here, Ms. Rita Simmons. I'm going to have her stand up.
I want you to stand.
But we just wanted to tell you thank you so much, and we're looking forward to venturing out and getting into the city and bringing more of our kids into the city, from the city into the church with more workshops that we're planning and we're scheduling at this point so that we can build a bridge for our kids. Ms. Lori, I did talk to Ms. Clemmons. I know her family very well, so we're talking about moving forward with the firefighters' department for young girls. But thank you so much, and we look forward to doing more and more with the city of Boynton. Thank you so much.
Ms. Leverett, Ms. Leverett, and group commit, 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 because it was my money that you all spent, you know.
[laughing]
But thank you. I really want to say I did not, you know, attend your event, but what I heard from all of you, it was worthwhile. I've heard nothing but positive things. I'd like to say everybody who attended, keep going up. The sky's the limit. I'm backing you 100%. I have never been so proud to hear what you all learned, and also that some of the adults that was there didn't know as much as you all. They had to take notes as well, so it was beneficial. Appreciate all of you. Love you.
Amen. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, City Commission and residents. My name is Austin Sekel. I live off of S-E-K-E-L. I live 94, 98 South Military Trail, right up off Gateway. I serve as the grassroots director for a great organization called U.S. Term Limits. We are a nonpartisan, nonprofit organization, and we support term limits at all levels of government. Congressional term limits are a big goal. You may know us from the early '90s. We helped spearhead the initiative for term limits for the state legislature and the cabinet and congressional term limits. In the early '90s, it passed with nearly 80% support vote from voters all across the state. In 1995, the Supreme Court ruling, U.S. Term Limits versus Thornton, it was a split decision that stated congressional term limits had to be decided at the federal level. To this day, we have a bill in Congress currently fighting for that. Outside of that, you may have heard of us in Florida. We just tried pushing for an initiative for school board term limits. We actually got tossed off the ballot in a state Supreme Court ruling, League of Women Voters versus Ken Dentner, unfortunately. We'll be fighting for that again soon. But as a resident here, I heard recently, while I was out of town on vacation, that y'all were talking about term limits, so I figured I'd come around and talk about it as well. It's supported by nearly 80% of voters from all spectrums, Democrats, Republicans, independents alike. And in a study entitled Assessing the Effects of Municipal Term Limits on Fiscal Policy in U.S. Cities, if you could give me a moment here. Klinger writes that time horizons and turnover in elected officials yield changes in taking on municipal debt. They find that turnover among mayors leads to less municipal debt. And we think that's a good thing, and we think that term limits for all offices, whether big or small, are important. They all function together, and we appreciate that. If there were support for amending term limits that currently exist in the city charter, whether it be polling done or some significant measure to gauge the citizen's support rather than moving on on your own, I know that we'd all love to work together on the issue as opposed to having one side against the other. We know that term limits definitely are still highly supportive, whether for this form of government statewide and elsewhere. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them now as well.
No, but we do thank your comments.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Deidra Clayton. I live at 632 Northwest Fifth Street. I want to say first, Mayor, thank you for moving ahead. I want to say first, Mayor, thank you for moving ahead. Only thing I have doubt about, which I voted for you again, is to please remove these chickens and roosters. This is a city, not the country, and we must all abide. Also, my thanks goes to Commissioner McCray, City Manager Lori, and the chief, because I would, I never in my life would think that MLK would be cleaned up the way it is. Thank you. I walk every day, you know, Mayor. And I also, I live in a community where there's a lot of retired people, a lot of people that work, and me personally and others, we do not want to hear any more noise. I can't even listen to my TV because the music coming from out there to Sarah's here in Park a long time ago, coming all through the walls. And Chief Gregory, please get ready, because I know how to use the telephone. I will be calling. And thank you.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yep.
I'd just like to also say to our new co-compliance of-
Community standards.
-director, community standards, whatever. I've been, how long have you been, I call it anything I feel like, but anyway, y'all change your name. But Stan, sir, I'd like for you to meet the young lady that spoke. Okay, the reason I want you to meet her was that she was the one that was instrumental when I was coming home from work, and she told me to pass by this address and call me back and tell me, what do you see? I seen a dilapidated old city bus backed up in a yard. And I want to tell you, and make sure you tell Karen that I said thank you, when we got the final word after the buses moved, the owner of that bus made the statement that I was going to renovate it and rent it out for rooms. We was headed down the wrong road, and I'm just saying, you know, thank God we got eyes and ears on the ground that's working besides Commissioner McCray. That is my right hand, my left hand, and sometimes I think she thinks she owned me, but anyway, that's my best friend. But anytime she call you, sir, she's serious. She's serious. I'm just saying, anytime she call you, I'm just saying, please listen to her, because guess what? She has a lot to say. I'm older than she is, but she thinks she's older than I am, but thank you anyway, sir. Please meet her.
But yes, the comment regarding the roosters in the heart of Boynton Beach, I think that is something we need to take a look at. So, Mr. Temple, yeah, we need to do something about those roosters. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at public comments?
I live at 433 Southwest Second Avenue, and I don't even know where to start.
Your name.
Mike Schramko, 433 Southwest Second Avenue. This is a bunch of pictures of all the garbage.
You gotta speak into the microphone, too.
Pictures of all the garbage in my whole neighborhood that all of you are paying for, that have hauled off at any given time. It's pickup truckload after, pickup, pickup truckload. This is all east of I-95, turned into a complete wasteland. My car insurance went up because there's so many uninsured motorists live in my neighborhood. My grandparents' house smells because there's a 40-foot-tall garbage dump behind it. I mean, and then the traffic's out of control with the school zone. Kids are almost hit every day. There's pictures of kids that are, there's garbage on the sidewalks, so the kids are forced out into the highway, you know, and half the streetlights don't even work, you know? I don't even know, these are all the car accidents. This is all within a couple of days. I don't, you know, so I just, I'm just asking, we need help over here. You know, east of 95 is so neglected, and nobody will stand up and say anything, but these pictures don't lie. I mean, it's turned, you've turned my neighborhood into a wasteland, you know? I was born and raised here, and I'm embarrassed, you know? And the old code administration has a one-star rating.
Excuse me, you guys still speaking to the microphone?
Our other, our code enforcement has a one-star rating because you guys put somebody in office that was one of the official secretary's husband, who's been fired from Miramar, Riviera, Lake Worth, and then he's, now he's the head of code compliance for the past year? That's what instigated all of this, right here. I'd ask that anybody with half of a heart, look at the kid in the wheelchair who's forced to go out on the highway in the morning, you know, because the sidewalks are all full of couches and cars that you're allowing. The streets, the brand-new streets are ripped apart because you're allowing 15 different cars in a single-family neighborhood. I mean, is that cool? Is that normal? Turned my town into a wasteland.
Can I?
All right.
Right here. Adam, would you step out and get Mr. Schramko's info, and maybe we can get some addresses and some sites from him?
Oh, and I can't give you the addresses, because half the houses don't have numbers.
All right.
We're Adam. I'll earn his money this week.
All right. Do we have anyone else who would like to speak for public comments? Yep.
Hi, my name is Lyndon O'Carroll. Mike's my neighbor. He's very passionate about this, working on the calm-down part. I live at 438 Southwest Second Avenue. I live in the same area. I'm a teacher over at Pointyana Elementary. I go up and down Seacrest every day. My concern, his concern, many of ours, is that on Seacrest, that cars are parking or there's garbage there, and so the kids that get the buses early in the morning, they have to, like, circle out onto the road, because I have to go down, I used to live right up from the library, that's not there, so I would go down the road where the library is, and you turn, and you see kids that are having to circle around the mess on the sidewalks so that they can get to their bus stop. It's scary that road anyway right now because of all the construction, and so this is just impossible. Again, I, I love Boynton. I was born in Briny Breezes. I've been here for 63 years. I can tell you, in the last couple of years, I come home at night from school, I shut the door, I lock it, and I don't go out again. I don't like that. I love Boynton, right? I don't like that feeling, and I'm not really scared of anything as a rule, right? But where we live, east of 95, in that block from Boynton Beach Boulevard to 15th Avenue, we feel neglected. There's many of us that feel neglected. And again, I love Boynton, okay? Please help us. Thank you.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you coming out here, and Michael, too, to let all the commission know. I've gotten a lot of emails, and so we appreciate you coming out here so that you let everyone know of what's going on. Do we have anyone else that would like to speak at public audience? Seeing none, moving on to administrative. Advisory Board appointments, I don't believe we have no applicants. The Boards open, our Building Board of Adjustments and Appeals, two alternates, Education Youth Advisory Board, two students, Historic Resource Preservation Board, one alternate, Library Board, two alternates, Senior Advisory Board, one alternate. Three city commissioners will be traveling to the National League of Cities Conference on Tuesday, November 19, 2019. This is a commission meeting day. The commission can either reschedule the meeting or cancel it. Monday, November 18, 2019 is a possibility. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, Mayor. Since that's coming up to a holiday as well, I'm gonna be the first one to say I'm in favor of canceling it, and if there's something urgent that comes up, I'm just saying, I'm in favor of canceling it.
All right. Is there a second? Is staff okay with that?
Yeah, there isn't anything now that I know of that's time-sensitive, but it will just have to wait for a meeting if we have-
So we'll have one in the first, you know, in November, and then the first week in December.
First week in December.
So, second. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Meetings moved to, oh, no, meetings canceled. Moving on to consent agenda, I'd like to pull item C so that we can have our lobbyists speak. Yes, Commissioner McCray.
I'd like to pull items A, D, G, and I.
A, D, G, and I?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Do you mind if we go, let's go start with A. Proposed Resolution Number 19-084 authorized the city manager to sign an agreement utilizing Broward Sheriff's Office Agreement with Express Radio for the purchase of Motorola products with an estimated annual expenditure of $50,000.
Mayor, thank you. The reason I want to pull this, I'm just saying, is that we have backup material, but I'm just saying, the public itself are not aware of some of this backup material, and I'd like for Chief to come down and explain to us, how many years will we have to spend $50,000 of whoever is responsible for this being on the agenda?
Utilities.
Yeah, this is a utility issue.
Whoever?
It's a warehouse.
Warehouse issue.
Warehouse issue. Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. This particular agreement is for our warehouse to purchase products and have it in the warehouse for various departments to use. Utilities is one of the main users of it with a low-frequency radio system, and in the past, we've had it, we've expended $38,000 this year so far, and $29,000 the previous year, and $27,000 the previous year. So it's just a matter of in-stock warehouse items for the, mainly the utility radio system.
So we do this every year?
Every year.
But we're only asking for $50,000, but hopefully we will not use $50,000.
Right, just up to $50,000.
We always do, it goes back in. Thank you, as long as I know what we're spending money for. Motion to approve.
Do I have a second? Motion's been seconded by Vice Mayor. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item C, you know, approve, approve the piggyback from October 1, 2019 through September 30, 2020 for Ballard Partners, Inc. If Matt could come up here, they said get the most, get the most out of your lobbyists, and so I'd like you to tell us, what are we getting this year?
Excuse me, do, wait a minute, do we have a new agenda? Because I'm just saying-
It's part of the piggyback under item C.
Okay.
Good evening, for the record, Matt Forrest with Ballard Partners. It's been an honor to represent the city of Boynton Beach in Tallahassee for your state legislative issues for many years now. This is a renewal, I think, part of our existing contract. We have another ability for you guys to renew, so all the same terms. We've, I looked it up real quick today, to, I think Commissioner McCray, last time I was up here, asked me how long we've represented you guys. As near as I can tell, we have a longer history than this, but consistently, we've now been representing you guys since 2014. So we're starting our seventh session kind of together. Actually, just sent a memo to Lori and the staff earlier this week, preparing for the next legislative session, which will begin in January. Even though the session begins in January, committee weeks start in September, so just about a month away. So we'll be sitting down very soon to talk about our legislative issues and goals. It's too full when you talk about your legislative lobbying efforts from the city standpoint. For starters, you, we are a voice for you in Tallahassee. It's much easier than you guys being up there the entire session, even though I live about 10 minutes up the road from here for several months of the year. I moved to Tallahassee, and I'm at the Capitol every single day. So we're a voice for the city of Boynton Beach for any issue on a variety of local government issues, legislation, but then also, we're usually trying to pull some money down for you guys, too. We've been successful over the last few years in doing that, not, not successful in this past session, but we brought home money in 2015, 2016, 2018, and hopefully going up there, we'll be successful again here. I always, I always talk of appropriations kind of like taking your swing at the plate, and if you go, if you go three for 10 or four for 10, you're batting 300 or 400, and that's a pretty good record. So it's been an honor to represent you. As we go into the next session, a lot of the same topics that have been in the forefront recently, home rule fights will definitely be there, preemptions from the state will definitely be filed, and of course, issues like vacation rentals, I'm sure, will be back up. As of right now, I'm happy to tell you, there's about 100-plus bills that have been filed for consideration next session. So far, none of them are huge red flags for local government, but of course, we are at the very, very beginning of things getting filed. With that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
When is, I guess, the session timeline?
So the committee weeks will begin in September. There's one committee week in September, September 16, and then back-to-back committee weeks in October, two committee weeks in November, one in December, then there's about a three-to-four-week break over the holidays. The session begins the second week in January and runs for 60 days. So we'll be done with the 2020 session by early March. So this is really that time when Florida legislation heats up, issues ramp up, and of course, you need to be engaged and alert, otherwise, things can happen in Tallahassee that trickle down eventually very quickly to you.
Okay. All right. Any other, from the Board?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Look forward to working with you.
Thanks for your time.
Item D, approve an increase of $15,000 with Pride for tire recapping utilizing the state of Florida's contract. This will bring the total approved expenditure to $65,000.
Thank you. Somebody help me, I'm trying to see, you know, tell me, are we spending more money by recapping, or are we saving money? And I'm just saying, what are we recapping tires for what?
They use them mainly for the solid waste, and there's a couple size tires specifically that they use. We've spent, in the last couple of years, 40,000 and 50,000, so we initially estimated 50,000. So far this year, we're at 50,000, so we need to increase it for the remainder of the year. So it's just a matter of how often they blow tires and how many tires they blow during a year.
Let me ask another question, maybe the recapping might be helping them blow tires. I'm just saying, how much would it cost for a new tire?
More.
City manager said more, but how much more?
Yeah, recapping saves you versus buying a new tire, so when we can, we recap, depending on the damage to the tire. If it's severe, you can't. So that's, that's a more economical way to go, to go about your fleet tire replacement.
Okay, give me an example of a tire new and compared to a recap. Let me say it like-
Price-wise?
I don't know. Andrew here?
The cost of a new tire is $549, and the cost to recap it is $129.
And how often do we recap tires? I'm just saying, somebody, you know, from solid waste probably need to explain this. I'm just saying, you know, I, I'm mind-boggling about why we buy and recap, you know, doing recaps when we could buy new tires. I'm just saying, somebody help me understand.
Well, the cost of a new tire is 549, and the recap is 129.
Okay, thank you, Assistant City Manager. Let me talk to the young man who's responsible. I'm just, how often do we get tires recapped? I'm just saying, I need some, make me understand.
Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works. When we have recycled tires, we try to use them again, and we do it, we can do it up to three times on a tire. After that, they have to be recycled. So instead of buying and purchasing a new one, we try to use a recap, and they last. They typically last, it's roughly about the same amount of time as the tread on a tire. So they should last about the same amount of time as purchasing a new one.
So, so after three recaps, we get rid of it?
Correct.
Okay, that's what I need to be hearing, you know, okay.
Yeah, that's just the law. You can't use it more than three times.
All right.
And this is the industry standard.
Okay, I'm good.
All right. Yes, Vice Chair, Vice Mayor, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to go on the record as being pro tire recapping.
What now?
Pro tire recapping.
Oh, you're pro, okay.
I had to put that out there for the public.
All right. I'm pro people parking at my spot, too. Let's go. Motion to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to item G, approve increase of blanket purchase order for $10,000 issued to Vincent Sons Landscaping for annual landscape maintenance for our utility stormwater ponds landscape maintenance services. With the proposed increase, the new total will be $91,719.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I had this pulled was somebody explained to me, are this the group that's responsible for doing, and the mediums, the landscaping?
Joe Pater, Nitty Utility Director. This, this contract was for the stormwater facilities, not the mediums. This is a utility stormwater facility maintenance contract, so we spent a little bit extra money than we budgeted for these, these two items, Bury Free Park and the Ink of Pond Maintenance. So we're asking after the fact-
Sir, I'm not being funny. You're talking, your voice up and down, talk so I can hear you. I'm the oldest thing up here.
You need to lift up the microphone.
This is a stormwater contract for our stormwater ponds, and this increase is for additional work that we didn't originally budget for, so we're asking after the fact, unfortunately, for additional money to pay for this, these services provided.
Let me ask another question. Do we see any more after the facts coming up for this year? I'm just saying.
No, sir, not for this contract.
Well, he stood up. I'm just trying to find it. Do we see any more?
I'll let him answer that one.
Not on utilities.
Just to be clear, VNS is one of the vendor, Andrew Mack, Director of Public Works, VNS is one of the vendors that does landscape maintenance for the city. They have a contract with utilities, they also have one with Public Works.
Thank you.
I am working on an agenda item, because we had a landscape vendor, Duval Landscaping, that was, their contract was terminated, so we had to reallocate those contracts, those- those sites to different vendors. So I will be bringing back a agenda item, hopefully either next meeting or the following meeting in September.
Thank you. And they are the same ones that's responsible for doing the mediums?
VNS is, they do have a contract with me.
Making sure I'm not sitting up here going to sleep. Okay, I'm, I'm good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none. Motion passes unanimously. Item I. Approve utilizing the National JPA Cooperative Contract with Tropic Cars Golf and Utility Vehicles, a authorized Jacobson distributor for north-central Florida for the purchase of one Jacobson Truckster XD diesel, four-wheel drive, two Jacobson ZT 660-inch mowers, Turfco wide-spin 1550 tow behind top dresser, Ryan HD 18-inch sod cutter, and one Lully Broadcast Spreader HR for a total purchase price of $52,928.20.
Thank you, Mayor. Someone from golf can ask us some questions. Someone from staff, when was the last time we replaced these? Have we replaced them?
Yeah, I don't think they've ever had real quick.
No.
Ron Tapper, Golf Course Manager. Some of these are additions, some of these are equipment that we don't even have, that we need. The Jacobson has a Z-turn motor. There's two of them. We have a residential one right now. These are commercial ones. We're, we have equipment, some of the equipment there is 15, 16, 20 years old that we're replacing right now. So some of the equipment that you see here will be traded in or jobbed out. We're going to be scrapped.
Okay, let, let me say it again. Tell me which ones are we replacing and which ones we're buying?
Not replacing, we're going to be adding two Z-mowers to Jacobsons. We don't, we have a residential one. That's two we don't have. The sod cutter, we don't have. A broadcast spreader, we need. We probably, trying to think of the one we have down there. It's very old. Doesn't work. The diesel vehicle is something to pull the spreader. We don't have, we got tractors and all. We have some, some downed items. That's, that's a bigger vehicle to pull the spreader for better maintenance, putting that stuff on the course. So you have to have a heavy-duty vehicle to do that. And the tow behind top dresser is for doing the work on the course that you would, the vehicle will be pulling.
When is your last day?
I don't know yet. I'm waiting for, checking with the doctors.
Okay, I know it's going to be soon. Okay, but anyway, thank you for clarifying it because I want to make sure that we're not trying to just spend money, just to be spending money on this golf course, and I'm just saying.
This money is also in the budget. It's not going over. We waited till you-
Whether it's in the budget or not, we're still spending money.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Ron?
Motion to approve.
Ron, before you go, I was able to tour the facility, the warehouse where you store all this, correct?
Yes.
Are you getting rid of all the, the old parts and machines that we don't, that we, were given to us that we don't necessarily use or need?
Yes, some, Vice, yes. Mr. McCray, the, some of the equipment that you see here is being replaced. Some of it actually belongs to the superintendent, not even ours.
Okay.
So it's, that he brought in six years ago. So that's, that's part of the stuff that we're replacing.
Thank you.
And Mayor, to your counter, some of the stuff is in the new budget that we're replacing when you were down there. So in our new budget, we're looking to, on our lease, we're trying to get some others, like six mowers, two Greens, three Greens mowers and three T mowers, and we're trying to get on a lease, which is in the new budget.
Wonderful.
And to get rid of some of the other stuff to make it better, and then get out of this 15, 20-year-old equipment. So it's going to be replaced, just like the utility vehicles we got last time.
And the golf carts?
Yes. And it's all in the budget.
All right, excellent.
We'll get rid of the junk in the warehouse, is what I think you're asking, right?
Yes.
It doesn't look like we have an old parts museum in there.
Yes, and we did job some of that. Warehouse picked some stuff up, and we'll do the same here. Out of some of these in the new budget, when we do get some of the new mowers that were, it's in the new budget, we're probably going to just keep two for scrap parts for something, for when we do top dressing greens, which it really takes a turn on the mowers. And then the other ones, we're going to have the warehouse job them out for trade or whatever because they're just too old.
Yep. All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the remainder of the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Consent bids and purchases over 100,000. Is this the, the new consent agenda?
Yes, sir.
Is there any item that someone wishes to pull?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Public hearing. The City Commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Proposed ordinance number 19-027.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 4, site development standards by creating a new Article 12 entitled Sustainable Development Standards, providing for purpose and intent, applicability, exemption, sustainable development options, and maintenance, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
All right. Do we have a presentation?
Yeah. Do you, would you like a presentation?
Board or Commission?
I'm not in favor of presentation, but I'm in favor of some discussion.
Okay, what's your question?
It's up to you.
Okay, first of all, please tell me, you know, from the news, what's the, is it Greenwich one that's melting now? Greenland or whatever they're saying on TV?
I'm sorry, Greenland, yes. Antarctica as well.
Thank you. And the reason I, you know, really want to just put a plug in is I'm just saying that we need to be cognizant of climate control now. I'm just saying, you know, there's a lot happening in the world that, you know, we're taking for granted. That's my plug. Okay.
All right.
Couldn't agree more.
All right. Do, does anyone from the Commission want to hear the presentation of what we're doing?
I am in favor of hearing this presentation.
All right. Thank you, yes.
All right.
We'll make it quick.
I'll sit down and, oh, I'll stand then. Okay.
You have the clicker right there.
I have a clicker. Last time I sat down, but I'm happy to stand. I think I can read. Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator, have a brief-ish presentation, but I will try to go through it rather quickly because you have the ordinance in front of you. So to introduce our sustainability development standards. Development in this city, we know, has benefits. It brings jobs often. It increases our tax base. It enhances the vibrancy of our communities. However, development can also pose challenges. Simply put, more concrete means a hotter city. Commissioner McCray brought up the issue of climate change already. I don't know about you all, I was very hot coming here today. We don't want a hotter city. More concrete also means permeable, more permeable surfaces that don't allow stormwater to run off, and more greenhouse gas emissions through more buildings and more energy use. So the, the standards are a holistic way to address many of these challenges while, while allowing developers a great deal of choice in what measures they implement and how they implement them. The background is several of our city plans support this initiative. Our Climate Action Plan in 2010 calls for governing the city by green or sustainable LDRs with different tiers of design criteria. In 2016, the CRA Community Redevelopment Plan, also called in its Implementation Guide for modifying the LDRs for Sustainable Development Regulations. And most recently, the Strategic Plan, which was just approved in June, which includes as one of the top six city priorities, environmental sustainability. And within that area, one of the, I'm so sorry, I really need my glasses.
Be sorry. Just get your glasses.
We all know.
I used to be able to see better. Okay, so one of the priority projects is sustain, addressing sustainability within land development regulations. So repeated and integrated through several of our city plans. The process for developing these standards has been, it was initiated with the Staff Sustainability Committee in 2017. We first reviewed our city's existing LDRs that address sustainability, including in several topic areas that are listed up there. We did thorough research into other cities' LDRs. I actually have a list of 46 Florida cities and how they've addressed sustainable standards. Some of the cities we followed most closely as a model are Pompano Beach, Dunedin, Hollywood, and Coconut Creek. We drafted the list based on our research and developed an associated point scale, and then importantly, we calibrated those points against real site design applications and went back and forth to ensure that this, this scale made sense and was feasible for a range of different developments. This draft was approved by the Sustainability Advisory Team in May and the Planning and Development Board in June. It begins moving forward, so this is not retroactive standards. Applicability includes all applications for approval of a new site plan, major site plan modification or minor site plan mod, resulting in an increase or replacement of building square footage by 5,000 square feet or more. So the smaller minor site modifications would not be applicable. Exemptions include interior renovations to existing buildings and structures, construction of single-family or duplex dwelling unit on individually platted lot within single-family or two-family residential districts, and buildings exempt from local building permits or governmental review pursuant state and federal statutes. For all applicable projects, then, the standards require four items. First is flat roofs must be white. Second is that outdoor lighting must consist of warm white LED. Third is the landscape material must include a minimum of 5% three different species of butterfly-attracting plants. And then the last one is electric vehicle charging stations, that one Level 2 charger that serves two parking spaces must be provided for 50 dwelling units or 5,000, 50,000, excuse me, square feet of non-residential development. A few brief words about the EV requirements before I move on. You may have seen projections. This is one estimate that for 2030, about 20% of new light-duty vehicles sold in the U.S. will be plug-in electric vehicles. So what that means for Florida is that in just 10 years, we would have about 800 EVs on the road, which would require about 13,000 public charging stations, hence the need and why many cities are putting in their own charging stations and requiring developments to do so as well. There's a bit of data on the county level from 2014 to 2018 showing that this increase is starting already. So what we're asking is for Level 2 equipment. To be very clear, Level 2 equipment is not the fast-fast chargers. It's the, the moderate chargers that take generally three to eight hours for a full charge, but are completely sufficient for the purpose of going around town, doing your shopping. You don't necessarily need a complete charge, which you would then do at home overnight with your car. These are not the very expensive Tesla chargers that take 20 minutes or 30 minutes. The costs range generally 800, 2500 dollars. An installation can range up to a few thousand maybe, depending on the wiring that's necessary, but tends to be cheaper in new construction than in retrofits. Third-party ownership is also an option that some of these, these companies listed here, and there are many more that I hear from, offer the equipment, the installation and the maintenance, often free of charge to public and private entities, and then charge a fee. And so our development, developers certainly have that option, so they don't have to put up the capital costs themselves. I just wanted to cover that because the P&amp;D Board had some questions about the economics of EV chargers. So moving fairly quickly, because you've all seen the ordinance, it's a tiered point system based on the size and type of development. So in addition to those four required actions, developments must meet the minimum number of points required, which range from 15 to 25, depending on the size. And they accrue points by choosing among a large menu of options across five categories. The first category is energy. I'm not going to go through all the details, but just generally speaking, the points associated with each item are dependent on both the relative cost of that improvement and the, its impact, its positive impact in terms of sustainability. So things like renewable energy has more points than things like efficient lighting, which doesn't cost very much. The second category is recycling and waste reduction. And then the third category is water. And just one comment on the water is that some of these innovative and technical options, we are actively educating ourselves as staff. These include things like permeable parking and sidewalk surfaces and rain gardens. We're attending workshops on green infrastructure to bring everyone on board, so we can then be a resource for the development community and lead by example. We actually, for rain gardens, we have a partnership with FDEP to install four rain gardens on city property, and the utility is working on that. So we can lead by example and through some demonstration projects. And the fourth category is urban nature. These include items like green roofs, green walls, installing nature paths, increasing the tree canopy more than what's required in code, and so forth. And developers can also implement transportation improvements. And then finally, there is another category, and applicants are encouraged to propose other options that may be best suited to their project, which would be evaluated case by case by the development director. So the total, you see, of all of those items that they can choose from is 127 points. And recall that we are asking for 15 to 25 total points, which represents between 12% and 20% of this total that's available to them, demonstrating that there's a lot of leeway, flexibility, and a lot of pathways by which any developer could choose the items to meet what the minimum requirement is. Finally, we did include a clause about maintenance, saying that any points that they obtain shall be maintained, so people don't let their improvements go, go downhill. Oops, that's it. I don't know where it went. That was all. In summary, it's a holistic, flexible system that we feel is a very good option for Boynton Beach. It'll help build a culture of sustainability and address these environmental challenges that we have. Thanks.
Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Since we like to lead by example, how many EV vehicles do we have here in this city?
We currently have one.
Is that the little blue one that sits down at City Hall that I never see moving?
Yes.
Yes.
It's the one that's there. I see it moving once in a while. It's true. It's, it's definitely on my to-do list, and you all are going to see me again in a few months when I bring the draft Climate Action Plan for your approval, hoping by about the end of the year. That's certainly one of the areas that we want to focus on is greening the fleet. And I actually have a workshop coming up and a webinar coming up, and I want to engage Public Works. And, there you are. And the fleet and other staff on this issue.
Let me, let me ask Lori, anybody drive that car?
It's our electrical inspector's.
Yeah, it's for an electrical inspector. The reason you see it, because he's in the, he's in the office doing plan review when you see it there, but when he's out doing inspections, he's driving.
Take that out.
We, we're going to, we're looking at our, how we deploy those, because it may actually be better used someplace else and get more use. It's just not getting, it's not getting a lot of use through development, but it was our first shot at it.
Okay, let me say another. How often do he drive it, Colin? I'm just singles. Every time I'm at City Hall, I always see it parked there.
It's pretty much every day. It's just not a lot every day.
Every day, okay. Next time he in it, call me. Let me see him riding it, okay?
We'll, we'll come by.
All right, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Pincera?
Rebecca, you mentioned something in the beginning that I want to circle back to. You mentioned concrete and how concrete can regulate the ambient temperature.
Yes.
I also know that because we live where we live and flooding is an issue, there's certain types of concrete that can actually help mitigate that, perhaps because it's more porous, whatever it may be. Is that part of the discussion? Because flooding is a problem for all of us.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And one of the things that I think is a model with these standards is we address the traditional energy use and green building types of actions, but we also have a good, robust section that addresses stormwater. So I was going quickly, but our water section includes items that both address water conservation and stormwater management. And I spoke briefly about the rain gardens. For example, bio swales are a green infrastructure way to promote more infiltration of stormwater. So that's one of the options that we're promoting. And I mentioned we have the partnership with FDEP, so we can learn by doing it and be an example. And then the porous pavement, the permeable, we have both parking and sidewalks as ways they can get points. We're actively learning. In fact, I have two people in utility, two engineers in utilities and one engineer in Public Works who are researching. And Paula, I'll give her a shout-out. Paula Mendoza in Public Works found a contractor who is a certified, where did I put it? A certified pervious- A certified pervious, here it is, pervious concrete craftsman. There are four levels of service, certified pervious certifications through the National Ready-Mix Concrete Association, and craftsman is the top level. And she's talking to him and looking to bring him in to get our inspectors and our planning staff and utilities and other staff trained and on the same page, because we want to learn specifically what the best practices are.
Do we know if, if you have this type of concrete, do we know if that actually helps to reduce your flood insurance?
It doesn't, it doesn't affect flood insurance, but what it does do is it allow you to reduce your amount of stormwater treatment on-site, because you can use pervious pavement where it'll perk into the ground. So that's why we're promoting it. There, it has to be put in properly and has to be maintained properly. So that's what staff is learning on how to do that, so they can teach other people how to do that, because we do want to encourage it. Because what it does is it actually provides more green space that you can use for green instead of for ponds. So yes, it does help. It won't mitigate flood, because flood is a whole different modeling. It doesn't, it doesn't really, that doesn't really affect it, because it's so small. Flooding is a big basin issue, so I can't, it does affect it, little tiny, but you can't measure it by sight on the flood, so that's why it doesn't affect flood insurance. But it definitely affects your stormwater permitting and your cost of building stormwater systems. So there's a savings there if you utilize that kind of stuff.
I understand. Thank you.
I wanted to make one further comment after chatting with the city manager that I forgot to say earlier, which is that the Sustainability Advisory Team not only approved this, but over the past several months gave their input, and they're, my and through me, the city's sustainability efforts, real liaison into the community currently, and we have a lot of passion on that team and a lot of knowledge in increasing the tree canopy and reducing heat island, increasing green space. And EVs and really everything on this list, a lot has been given their input, including pervious surfaces. So they're a great resource for us and a real example of community input and support.
So, and this will be mandatory for, you know, any of the required things where, you know, if you're building on more than acre of non-residential or 50 units of residential, you have to have at least 25 points?
Correct, as long as you meet the applicability criteria.
But anybody who wants to build a single-family home does not?
Single-family and duplex do not, and minor, minor site plan modifications under 2,000, I'm sorry, 5,000 square feet of addition, don't.
Okay. Thank you. I think this is a great thing for the Boynton Beach, where all of our new development. And so when will this take effect, Jim? Will, for example, the, any modification of site plans or site plans that already are in?
If site plans are already in, in the hopper, it will not apply to them, but new ones that come in after the adoption.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We got a motion in a second. Any further discussion from the board? May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Penserga?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Next, we'll move on to Chief Gregory. We'll discuss security as it relates to our Town Square project.
If I may, Mayor, this is an item that Commissioner Romulus had requested. How many months has this been on? It's been on here for a while, but as we neared finalizing our plans for Town Square, we needed to wait till we got that far to know what we were building, to be able to bring to you what our approach has been on, on overall security and police presence in the downtown core.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Michael Gregory, Police Chief.
Got to talk louder.
Pull the mic up.
Good evening.
There we go.
Are we good?
Yes.
I appreciate the opportunity to discuss security strategies we're going to put in place for the Town Square project. Okay. As we're all familiar with that project, we've had a number of meetings. I won't bore you with the little boring details, but for public consumption, it is a 16-acre site in the middle of downtown Boynton Beach. It'll include a new City Hall, new library, residential and retail spaces, hotel, playground, amphitheater, large open park space, parking garages, and a new fire station.
Stop right there. We have an amphitheater downtown?
Going to. It will be built, yes.
I just want to make sure while they're raising hell about another one. All right, go ahead.
This is the actual site plan of conceptually what it'll look like in one day when it's all completed in a few years from now. To the left, we have, this doesn't light up on the screen, but to the left, you have the north side of the project, which is Boynton Beach Boulevard. Seacrest is on the bottom of the screen, and then what we'll see in the yellow, in the middle of the screen, is the City Hall complex. To the left of that little gray building, you have the Cultural Arts Center. So in the center of the project, you have the majority of the city facilities, and it's wrapped around by the private investment. All those facilities have critical assets. Those critical assets will include the people, number one. That's our first priority for protection of life and safety, and we're talking about our employees as well as the public. So we look at that from both perspectives. Inside those buildings, the people who come there and work every single day, as well as the general public that visit. Obviously, we're interested in the security of the properties, the facilities themselves, the information that they contain, and then by doing a good job with the first three, we hope to maintain a very positive reputation, which is a critical asset for the city as well. Failure to do that and commit to the security of the projects, then we can end up with a negative reputation. Security risks. All public facilities include a certain number of, of security risks. It doesn't really matter if it's in this city or another city, but you can generally expect to have threats or risks that may involve anything from arson, assault, burglary, disturbance, typical criminal activity, as well as internal issues with internal theft, disgruntled employees, theft of information, and then public nuisance-type activities such as graffiti, vandalism, and the like. Those are common, not unique here. It's a common expectation of government facilities. So the best approach to address those risks is to look at our security measures and to have more than one. So for this project, we're looking at the structural design. We started with the actual plans. We had, we've been very fortunate that the design teams for sit for Town Square and the police station and fire stations have been very gracious to allow the police department to sit in and make some recommendations and advise on some of these areas, but of course, lighting, fencing, locks, all of those are important measures for maintaining that security. In addition to that, there's the environmental conditions, where we're talking about our landscaping. We're talking about where sidewalks are, where public areas are, where we want people to congregate, where we don't want them to congregate, and how we can create an environment for them that will, will include, increase their congregation in areas that we want and dissuade their going to areas that we don't want. Digital camera surveillance, we're all pretty familiar with that today. Automated license plate readers, emergency call boxes. I'm really excited about those emergency call boxes, because they serve two purposes. Obviously, you can call 911 and get assistance on emergency call boxes. The same type of devices you might have seen on college campuses. They're basically long, tall poles with a blue light on top. We have them now going in at Sarasota Park, large red obelisk-type objects. But they also send a message of safety and security, just their presence, just that you, if you had an issue that you needed to get assistance for, there is something close by that you can see visually that represents safety and security that you can reach out to. So even if you don't need it, it creates a sense of, of comfort and safety, just their visibility and their presence. So that's also planned for the Town Square project.
Chief, I just have a quick question while you're on that topic. The emergency call boxes, is that only audio or is it audio and video?
They have both.
They have both.
And they have the light on top, and the push button will go, take you straight to the 911 dispatch.
When somebody calls, can you see them like you're Skyping with them?
They're more, we're more concerned with seeing the actual vicinity they're in.
Okay.
So it's not naturally getting their picture like you're on a Skype call, but it's more to look at who's, what's the threat around them.
Understood. Thank you.
Access control. When we talk about access control, we're obviously talking about our doors and windows to the facilities, but also ballards, which will help control access on Ocean Avenue, so that we, when we want to use that street for a public place, we can ensure some safety from inappropriate vehicle traffic. And then none of the above items will help us much if we don't have the personnel to staff it. So a commitment to security is a commitment to wholesome and a full-throated security strategy, which would include the personnel that we'll be including in the plan. As you may recall, in the preliminary budget proposal for this upcoming fiscal year, we do have contractual security services that we'll be using to supplement our presence and visibility in the downtown Town Square vicinity. So we just can't piecemeal these things together. They will require a strategy, and a part of our strategy is to look at implementing measures that create deterrence, detection, delay, and response. Whenever we consider security measures, we want to look at a multi, a multi-layered approach. If we can deter someone from seeing an opportunity, we want to try to deter them and change their mind. Go somewhere else, find a softer target. If we, if someone's dedicated and determined that they're going to come in, break in, or do whatever they plan, we're talking about the criminal activity, we want to be able to detect it. We want to have those cameras in place, we want the license plate readers in place, so we can detect what's going on if we weren't able to deter it in the first place. Following that, we want to have multiple layers and levels of security to delay them getting to some critical asset, whether it's people inside of a building, or the safe, or cash, or whatever the case may be. We want to make it as hard to get to wherever that is as possible, so that gives us the ability to respond, and that's the last one there. If we, if the first three fail, we need people that can go there, whether they're security, whether they're police officers, to respond and address the challenge. And that, where the next bullet talks about a multi-layered interdisciplinary, interdependent system, and that's the key to this whole thing, tying it together. Talking about a single system that will communicate with the different devices that we have around the city, like our emergency call boxes, our access control, our panic buttons, and the like, as well as communicating with the public safety personnel, police and fire, so that there is no bureaucracy, there's no, someone needed to make a call, a lapse of someone passing a message. These systems report right back to the police 911 center, where they can get immediate assistance from police and/or fire or medical. Little bit more on a layered physical security approach. This is just an illustration to give you an idea of what we're talking about. We talk about a perimeter security, building exterior security, department door-level security, office door. Those are just examples, but you see there's multiple challenges for someone who wants to commit a criminal act to go through. That's what we want to create. We do this in our personal lives every single day. At home, you may have a fence around your yard, but you still have a lock on the door. You may have a lock on the door, but you may also have locks on your windows. Some people have fences, doorknob locks, window locks, have security alarms. There's any number of layers you want to add. The more you add, the more secure you are. So that's the approach that we want to take to this project as well, creating not just one thing and saying one and done. We have a digital security camera, and that's all we need. That's not how it would work, and it would really be a bigger challenge to try to secure an environment with just one solution. Best practices is you layer your technology, you layer your security measures on top of each other to give you the biggest bang for your investment. What does that look like in an actual structure? That's just another example of what, how it would play out for a building structure with your fencing, your perimeter, your exterior walls, interior walls, doors, office walls, making it all these different challenges for someone to get to whatever the most important critical asset is you're trying to protect from a philosophical perspective. But this is our reality. We're not talking about a single-family home. We're not talking about one structure. We need to create this multi-layered security plan for that whole site, and that was our challenge. So what you see here is just some highlighted triangles I've overlaid on top of the site plan, and that gives you a high-level example of how we're looking to protect the public areas. Those are not the exact camera locations or access card reader locations, but it gives you a perspective that we're looking to cover all the public openly accessible locations around the campus, and of course, inside the building structures as well. I don't want, I didn't want to add those to the, to the diagram, because then it'll all be blue and you wouldn't see anything. But basically, the plan that we're implementing will create those multiple layers of security throughout the entire campus that we're primarily responsible for protecting. And then we'll be, we're more than happy to work cooperatively with the private developer on their private properties as well. So the best approach is a balanced one. We're talking about balancing our operational issues, which is staffing and personnel and schedules, along with maintenance of all those technologies with electronic systems. So we have to have cameras, analytics, license plate readers, any number of technologies that will be included here in maintaining those systems, as well as the site and building features. What we put in on day one may not be valid based on our operational changes in the next two or three years. Some office may move, some sort of procedures may change in certain units that are in the City Hall, Town Square buildings. So we need to maintain this on an annual basis, checking, touching base with those stakeholders and each of the departments, to make sure that the plan that we started with is still appropriate for their use of the facilities and their operational practices every single year, particularly if a unit may move out of the City Hall or into another building. So we want to make sure that it's a sustainable program, every year revisiting our security, revisiting those department heads and those stakeholders to make sure that the measures that we have in place are still appropriate, still accurate, and still functioning for their mission each year. And then to wrap it up with our, with key elements to the overall strategy, it's going to rely on basically building a homogeneous security approach, which is basically putting in a new security system that will aggregate all those sensors. I'm referring, I'm using that term lightly to talk about the cameras, the access card control systems, the license plate readers. We're going to aggregate all those different sensors that'll be around the facilities back into a single system. No more will we have the days of, well, you have this vendor for that building, this other vendor for another building, this department head runs this computer system, that department head runs another one. We're consolidating that into one system that can receive all those sensors, all those alerts, and, and be able to streamline and create an efficient, as well as effective, security strategy for the city going forward.
And Chief, these systems, you know, we're establishing the standard now that's starting with Town Square, but these systems will also be implemented throughout all of our other facilities and our buildings as we improve our parks. It's all, we've established a standard, so it all communicates, it all feeds into our real-time crime center. So as we go through each park and we do improvements, we are adding security to those facilities as well, as well as our buildings.
Yeah, Lori, excuse me, since you're talking about parks, let me jump in. Whether you add improvements or not, crime is still prevalent in parks, and I'm just saying, you know, we need to kind of look at whether we are adding. I'm just saying, all parks need to be secured now.
Sir, yes.
As mentioned earlier, the, the systems are integrated. They aren't, they don't stand alone, they're not in silos, they talk to each other, and they communicate back, most importantly, to the emergency responders, police, fire, and the medical professionals. And then another key thing is that we have centralized management of it, as it's supposed to. We have a distributed system across the different sites and facilities centrally managed. And the other huge benefit, I think, to the strategy is also where, because it's distributed, we have distributed access and distributed monitoring. Each of the departments, as their department heads allow and would like, will have access to see the cameras, to see the things that are pertinent for their particular area. We, the police department can't be everywhere all the time. We need everyone's eyes and ears open and watching what's going on. The employees at each facility know best what is out of place, what isn't normal, what doesn't look like it should, what shouldn't be in this corner or left by that door. They know that better than anyone else. So it's not, the police department's not the only stakeholder. We certainly recognize that. It's a citywide effort, citywide initiative, and we're going to rely on all of the city departments that have these systems in there to be our eyes and ears along with that technology to make it a single homogeneous system, as mentioned in the first bullet. That wraps that up.
Yes, Commissioner McCray?
Thank you. Chief, you talked about, you know, dealing with people downtown, but you didn't say anything how you all will be dealing with the homeless population that be congregating there. I'm just saying, what are y'all putting in place?
Well, part of the plan is increasing that visibility. They don't typically get involved in disorderly activity when we're there. So having the security contractors in place circulating the downtown area will be another way to have eyes and ears and create that additional visibility. We're looking at restructuring some of our patrol zones, and particularly in the Town Square area, so that we can increase the staffing in that area. We'll ramp that up on a, on a year-by-year basis. We don't need 10 additional offices there this week. It's a It's a construction site. But over the next two, three, four years, as those buildings come out of the ground, as they start getting occupied, starting with City, well, starting with the Cultural Arts Center, then City Hall, then the residential properties, there'll be annually increases in population, increases of activity. And actually, that activity will help dissuade from some of the suspicious things that might be going on. So we'll have additional presence, additional visibility, and we'll always continue to be looking at, approaching it from a humanitarian perspective, offering resources to those people who need resources, and those that don't want to comply with the law will have to negotiate with them into compliance.
Right. We're ramping up visibility downtown. You're going to hear it now. I don't want it to be downtown, and you all forget about everything else that's not downtown.
Absolutely not.
Okay, just making sure we're on the same page. Thank you.
All right. Anything else from the commission?
I just want to thank you, Chief, for taking the time to really put all this together. I understand the sensitivity of the information and sharing it, but I also understand that you took a lot of time to really get it all together and just share the safety that, you know, individuals were worried about, especially with moving our police station out of the downtown area. I know that this was a major concern for residents of District 3, so clarifying that and putting that out in the open, and all the plans that we have to keep the residents and the people who will be moving in there and those who are currently living there safe is important. So thank you very much.
Thank you. I certainly recognize that while we're all concerned and want to make crime our number one priority, but we also have to realize that there is a perception and fear of crime. And we got to address that just as much. The folks that are there and have history with it, we got to make sure that they feel comfortable and they have a visible presence in the residential areas as well as in the commercial areas.
Well, District 2, we was not concerned about moving the police station from out of downtown, because years ago, the property was bought out to put the police station where you all are placing it now. I voted for it. I'm glad you're giving the citizens what we said that we was going to do years ago. That's where it's supposed to be. Thank you.
Sir.
And Chief, my big appreciation is the new standard of safety in Boynton Beach, that whatever we do here, we are going to, at our new city center, that we're going to move out throughout the city. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Our next item is to review and discussion of the attached staff report concerning options for the Sarah Sims Amphitheater or Performance Pavilion.
Yes, Mayor. Last meeting, or a couple meetings ago, we had a discussion regarding the amphitheater or performance pavilion. That was portions of which the amphitheater from downtown was salvaged to repurpose at the Sarah Sims Park. So there was a request by the commission to provide potentially some options to maybe add on or do something a little bit differently at the site than what, what we've done. We've provided options ranging from $30,000 to $1 million of things that we can do if that's something the commission desires. And if you'd like Colin to take you through the options, he's the engineer that can explain what reveals and certain walls are, but...
Well, I'd like to...
Let me know what you, how much detail you'd like from us.
Before you begin, Colin, I'd like to state my opinion is that, you know, no one's ever used this park yet, and, you know, there was a lot of perception based on assumption. And so I don't look forward to spending any more of the taxpayers' dollars on this, because we don't even know what the park's going to be like once it opens up. So I'd rather start with the park, because it seems like we can always add on to things once it is, it's open and we make some, you know, it's, it's kind of like we're thinking that we're not going to make any mistakes. And we know sometimes we make mistakes, so I'd rather do with what we have right now before trying to add on things and creating more problems for the future. Vice Chair.
I'm on the same page with, with the mayor in looking at the backup. You know, staff provided three quotes for three different types of upgrades, I suppose, for the Performance Pavilion. And I'm going to take credit for that phrasing, because it's been thrown around a lot, so I want people to know that I made that up, and I'm pretty proud of it.
Gee, thanks.
Of the three proposals, one costs $30,000. That's the cheapest one. And in reviewing that proposal, it's clear that the individuals who are upset about the current state of the Performance Pavilion would be equally dissatisfied with the $30,000 upgrade. When you move up to the mid-range upgrade, it's approximately $100,000. And then if you want to talk about what some individuals requested, which was a duplication of what's being built on Ocean, you're talking north of $1 million. We have spent CRA and city combined allocated resources north of $1.7 million. I think that is a substantial amount of money to put towards a park project, because when you look around the city at other park projects, that, that's not a common occurrence. So I used the analogy last meeting, I'll use it again. It's like if someone gave you a Bentley and you asked if it had heated seats, and when they said no, you said, "I don't want the Bentley anymore, the Bentley's terrible, take it away." This park is a jewel in the heart of Boynton. The residents, many residents have spoken that they do not want this to turn into an event space that kind of bleeds noise on the weekends into their community. So I just, I think it's exactly what was promised, plus the upgrade of the canopy in the Performance Pavilion. And as the mayor stated, we can see from the usage what types of future upgrades there can be. But, you know, as a commissioner for District 1, last year I was able to get $21,000 put into the budget for a single pavilion upgrade at the dog park in mine community, and to, to have a situation where over $1.7 million has been allocated, and now we're being, or the attempt is to influence us by a handful of individuals to throw another $100,000 or more at it. I just, you know, in District 1, I will take whatever I'm given, because we're not given much. And honestly, if this Performance Pavilion is inadequate and individuals want it removed, I would be happy to take it in District 1, because we don't have a Performance Pavilion. We don't really have that many pavilions, for that matter. So with that, you know, in my comments, I think it's an amazing park upgrade, as is with the $1.7 million allocated in the Performance Pavilion. And I think that we should look forward to the ribbon-cutting and the opening of that park, not disparage it before it even gets the gates open, when people have waited for, you know, for many years longer than I'm sure I could ever figure out. But Commissioner McCray knows the history. This park rehabilitation has been in the works for a long time, it's finally happening, and we should celebrate it.
Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. I'm going to echo what the two of you said, and my take is that, first of all, we need to open the park. Third, we need to find out, you know, what will be the usage. We have not told them what can and will be happening there. We have a new assistant, I forgot your title already, but I think this would be a nice thing. I'm just saying, once you're on board to look and observe what's going on at Sarah Sims and said, "This is what can be best for this community." First of all, we do need to recognize that this is a passive park, and it's just what it means pass, and pass means pass through, not pass and stay. I'm just saying, the more you give people what they say that they want, it's going to be used for the wrong thing. And I'm just saying, you know, I think my commissioners that's up here who voted to continue to extending money and saying that we're going to continue to support this, and support this, and support this, and for us to come back now and say that we're not satisfied. I'm not going to be to the representative and say, you know, "You all did not do enough." I thank you all for what you all have done, and let's use the park, and then let's find out if we need to do anything better or more, then let's go from there. But until then, I'm satisfied. Thank you.
All right. So, as we know, the...
Mayor.
Yes?
Yeah, we may have gotten a consensus, but I'd still like to put my two cents out there, because I think it's important, because not everybody agrees with what the three of you have mentioned up here. I would like to really emphasize on the mischaracterization of this park that's being construed by my colleague up here, namely Commissioner Katz, or Vice Mayor Katz. When you use the example of a Bentley that's been given that wasn't placed hot, whatever, warm seats weren't in there, so now we're asking for the Bentley to be given back, that, that's just offensive, and that's rude. No one, and no one who has come up here, who has mentioned about this performing, performing pavilion, or whatever we want to call it, has said, "Let's recant on the park, let's take, let's throw the whole thing away, throw the whole baby with the bathwater away." No one has said that. So please stop with the mischaracterizations and the belittling of what people are saying. It's offensive, it's annoying, so just enough. It's not funny. Secondly, you know, the fact that individuals are asking for this, I partly blame it on staff, to be frankly honest. The fact that, you know, the conception or the misconception that was allowed to be perpetuated is the issue that we're facing right now. We were told that an amphitheater was being relocated from Ocean Ave to Sarah Sims Park, and this is what we would have received. Unfortunately, you know, whether it's enough information or not enough data was shared with the public, perception is reality. People perceive that they're receiving the amphitheater from Ocean Ave, and all we received was a pavilion over covering, whatever you want to call it. And so that is the issue here, and that's what people are upset about, just the fact that we were told we're receiving a Performance Pavilion, and that's not what came through. It really just was a slanted or sloped concrete ground and a large structure that covers it. No one's complaining about that, no one's saying that we're not content or receptive of this. We're simply just saying that the standards of what was expected and what became reality were disappointing. And so no one's saying that, "Let's impede the park from opening, let's impede the progress that's been made here." What's simply being requested is, "How can we, over time, improve and upgrade that particular area?" I believe, in my personal opinion, that if expectations had been set from the beginning, we were rightly informed that it was simply the pavilion that was being transferred, transferred over, and not the three- or foot, four-foot stage, however much it was. If that expectation was set in the beginning, we wouldn't have this issue that we have now, where, where the perception is now that we've gotten a knockoff or a hand-me-down from what used to be on Ocean Ave. And so the fact that I'm sitting here having to clarify this is just offensive, offensive in and of itself. It screams the fact that, you know, continuously, you know, we have a portion of our city that, that just asks for equal treatment and equal opportunity and doesn't receive it. And then when they come out and speak against that, people ridicule them and say that, "Oh, we're being ungrateful, and we're asking for too much." I don't think $100,000 is too much to ask, to be honest with you. And that's, that's where I stand on things. So I simply wanted to have this information brought out. We don't have to act on it, obviously, as the numbers are clear up here. We don't have to act on it, but I would say it's important to at least just see what's possible. And as time moves forward, and individuals from the local community tell us what they'd like to see and what improvements they'd like to see to that Performance Pavilion, then maybe we can act on it at a future time. But it's important to at least see and know what the options are, and to at least show that the residents who came up and spoke on this, we've done something to at least address it and say that we hear you, and we are empathetic to what you're trying to say, and the message has been delivered. That's my personal opinion, and that's where I stand. Thank you.
Commissioner Penzerga, do you have any comments?
None at this time. I think we've already discussed this at the CRA meeting, and as, as Commissioner Romulus mentioned, the numbers are very clear. There is no point to add any additional information at this time.
All right. Thank you. Sorry, Colin.
Thank you, Colin, for your work on this.
Mayor.
Yeah.
Just a moment to...
I mean, Vice Chair, or Vice Mayor, do you mind if we just move on, or?
Just a minute. I haven't used my informational item for three and a half years, which means I've got hours of bank time.
I don't think that's how it works, but okay.
I stand by every word I said. I mean no offense to anyone. Oftentimes, when I speak up here, I am extremely blunt and to the point and objective, and that's what my articulated stance was earlier tonight. So I think that it's going to be an amazing park. I have faith in the commissioner who represents that district and that park, and has a history in that area. If he supports it as is, I support it as is, and I look forward to its opening.
Mayor, let me, let me make my final point.
Yep.
First of all, I only heard from individuals who came and said that they was representing, okay? I have not heard from the individuals who's going to be using that park. That's why I'm saying, "Let's use the park and find out what needs to be done." And I can't understand how another commissioner who represents another district hear more about what's going on in District 2 than I do, and I'm representing District 2, and I'm all around. And I'm just saying for them to say that they are speaking, that means that it's like that they're not recognizing who represent District 2. I represent District 2, and I'm going to continue to represent District 2 until the year of March 2020. And I felt offensive by saying that here, and I'm saying that, you know, what the people over there want. We're not people over there, we are human beings in District 2, we're citizens of Boynton, and this park is not only for District 2, this park is for the entire city of Boynton. And I want that to be for the record, not Sarah Sims for District 2. Sarah Sims is for the entire community, for the entire city of Boynton Beach, Florida. Thank you, I'm through discussing it.
All right. Moving on to the next item of new business, approve the request of Mayor Grant to distribute $400 of his community support funds to Danny's Dream Scholarship Fund.
So moved.
Thank you. All right. Any discussion? Saying none, all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations. Would you like to speak? Oh, we got two post.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Stacia Smith, and I am a resident of Boynton Beach for about 15, 16 years now, and we are very appreciative to the mayor and to the commission for supporting Danny's Dream, which is a scholarship fund for nursing students. And to give you extremely brief history, Danielle Dunkley was a nurse, born here in Boynton, at Bethesda. She was able to travel the world as a military wife, and while she was traveling, she was able to earn her, became a registered nurse, and then was working toward becoming a midwife and a nurse practitioner. But tragically, her life was cut short at the age of 28. And at that time, she was the mother of four young boys, and her husband was serving in Iraq. She happened to be my baby sister, and if you see her, you know, we do look similar at some point, you know, we looked a lot alike. But our, it was, it struck our family hard, and one thing is dealing with grief, and turning that grief into something positive. And so through grassroots efforts, we began fundraising, and we're really excited to share that this fall, we have our first recipient, Danny's Dream Scholar, who attends Palm Beach Atlantic University. But this is something that we're very passionately working to, to develop. Once we've reached a certain mark, and we're looking for company matches for all the corporate people that may be here, we are going to be working closely with Palm Health Foundation, Quantum Foundation, and the Community Foundation, to continue to build and to make sure that the residents of Boynton and the county have access to this. As you know, healthcare is such a big issue, and nursing, they always say there's a nursing shortage, and they may have lost one nurse, but they're going to gain so many who are just as passionate as she was. So once again, thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Our next item of legal, proposed ordinance number 19-028, first reading.
An ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 26 Water, Sewer, and City Utilities, grading Article 9 entitled "Chilled Water," providing for purpose and intent, definition, district energy plant, customer contracts, fees, systems, system maintenance, and water loss. Notice of violation and failure to remedy, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Saying none, Colin, you did a good job.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is everything that should be in there?
This is everything that needs to be in the ordinance, yes.
All right, that's all I need to know. Any further discussion? Saying none?
Discussion. How many of these are in the state? How many? I'm sorry. Do you know how many of these are in the state? How many of these are in the state? There's hundreds in the state, there's, there's seven utilities owned by public utilities in the state that do this kind of work, and that's growing, because there's a lot of utilities looking into doing this. So it's going to be good for the city, long-term. I know, that's what I'm asking. Good job.
Saying no, more further discussion, may I have a roll call, please?
Vice Mayor Katz.
Yes.
Commissioner McCray.
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus.
Aye.
Commissioner Penzerga.
Yes.
Mayor Grant.
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19022, an ordinance of the city commission of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending land development regulations, Chapter 2, Article 2, Section 4F, entitled "Request for Accommodation, Providing for Codification, Conflict Severability, and an Effective Date."
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Second. Any discussion from the board? Saying none. Any discussion from the public? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensilga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yep.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19023, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 2 of the city's code of ordinances, entitled Administration, Article 1 in general, by creating Section 2-24 to be entitled Non-Discrimination Policy, providing for nondiscrimination in the city's hiring policies and all other activities promoted or sponsored by the city of Boynton Beach, providing for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
A discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensilga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19024, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 3, zoning, Article 4, Use Regulation, Section 3, Use Regulations, clarifying the ability for an accessory used to be conducted outside a building within a budding road and canal right-of-way, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Discussion from the board? Discussion from the public? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Pensilga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19025, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending the land development regulations, Chapter 2, Land Development Process, Article 1, Overview, Section 4, Expedited Development Review Program, inserting additional eligible projects and benefits and eliminating redundant refurbage and requirements, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
The one question I had for Mr. Rumpf is regarding the limitation of the expedited process on certain mixed-use size. Are we keeping it at five acres or...
No. Mike Rumpf, the Development Director for the city. You'll notice that we have actually eliminated that paragraph that set the minimum acreage. Reason for that is it was an original oversight when we drafted the ordinance the first time, overlooking the minimum of 10-acre threshold that's in the SMU zoning district now. So you have to have a minimum of 10 acres to do an SMU zoning district in the city.
Okay. And so that is kind of the master plan. So if someone has, you know, a five-acre that they want to do a site plan, but it's part of a 10-acre master plan, that still qualifies?
It would, but it falls underneath a greater master plan, SMU.
Okay, perfect. All right. Any other discussion from the board? Saying none. Any discussion from the public? Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Pensilga?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
Ordinance 19026, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida, amending Ordinance 05061 related to the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District, providing for amendments to the purpose, general powers, and duties of the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District, providing for conflict severability, and providing an effective date. If you note the ordinance that is in the backup, there's a, or two ordinances. One is, as you read it on first reading, we had some discussion regarding amendment. Those amendments are shown in green, starting at line 58 of the revised ordinance. So I'll point out some of those changes to you.
Excuse me, Jim, can you speak up?
I'll point out some of those changes to you. The district board is redefined as consisting of the five members of the city commission, and therefore, the language that follows regarding the terms of office and the adoption, excuse me, and the election by the landowners of district officers and board are deleted. That runs through line 96. So if the commission is acceptable of that amendment, that needs to be addressed when there's a motion to approve. The next change is at line 203 through 207, and that indicates that the mayor of the city will be the chair of the board, and the vice mayor will be the vice chair of the board. So that is resolved with the appointment of the commission as the board members.
Excuse me? Of the ordinance?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of the ordinance?
Mind if I sit here?
Yes, we do. If you'd like to get behind the podium, and please state your name for the record.
I'd just like the copy.
So we normally do not print copies of all the ordinances. We have a copy online with the backup?
Kind of hard to follow along.
You can access it on your phone.
It can be. I don't have an extra copy of it, Mayor.
And so...
I'm reading from the one that's online.
Yep.
Perhaps as a compromise, could we put it on the TV screen?
I think it's a good idea.
Better than, if you don't have paper, than...
I don't know.
Colin?
...connectability?
Well, if it's online, we can put it on it.
We have access.
Can you look it up?
I'll work.
All right.
Let me continue on. So at line 17...
No, no. If we want to take a break, because we got this request. And so, yeah, it's going to take two or three minutes.
So while we wait, I'll say in our new chambers, we won't have to go through this because everybody's computer, you'll be able to switch back and forth. Just wanted to brag about our new chambers, that they're coming.
Don't brag.
Yeah, we'll brag when we're sitting there, right?
Yeah. I'm just scuffling down.
There we go.
I have a question while we're doing all this. This is for, I guess, the city attorney or the city manager. Would we be adding a portion to our agenda, like whenever we have any discussion items, or are there going to be any discussion items that we would have to go through as the board?
12-F. I'm sorry.
I'm not understanding the question. I'm saying for the future, once we are now serving as the acting board or the board for the QPOD, we would have another agenda line or something?
There would be. There would be either another agenda line for you to consolidate with your own meetings or to call separate meetings at your discretion.
Well, that's why I'm asking, because I don't want to have separate meetings.
Well, as it turns out...
So I'm sure we can bring it all in.
As it turns out, there is a meeting schedule. The board began its budget hearing. They addressed the budget at their last meeting. They did not conclude that business, and that meeting is carried over to the 27th at 2:00 PM. So if the ordinance is adopted and effective tonight, which is the way it's worded, that could be changed, of course, then the commission would come to the board and would either have to conduct that scheduled budget hearing continuation or continue that as well and reschedule that and announce that.
So Colin, you currently sit as the chair of that board right now, don't you?
That's correct.
What would your advice be in terms of let it ride out and finish out that budget meeting that you guys have been conducting, or would you want it to roll over to us?
I'm going to circle back and address some of those issues about some of the business that needs to be addressed when you do your amendments, if you adopt the amendments, and that includes the timing of them and the transition period and the like.
Right. Thank you.
All right. So what line are we on now?
So we're at line 117 through 120. This provision regarding the supervisors of the board, the board members who were previously entitled to compensation because the commission would be taking on that role, that section is deleted. That was fees for their services not to exceed $4,800 per year per supervisor. The next changes that are shown as line through were in the original first reading of the ordinance. And I believe those are the changes. If you would go back, though, to Section 5, which begins at line 47. So if you read through what has been done in this amendment, from the effective date of this ordinance, it shall be the sole purpose, I've deleted the word "sole," and continuing on that the purpose of the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District would be to retire the outstanding debt of the district, levy the non-advalorem assessments necessary to retire the outstanding debt, transfer and dispose of any and all assets of the real property interest, and I added the clause "to" to the city because before, it's hard to read that, but it just indicated that those assets would be transferred, but it didn't indicate in what manner. That would, if there are funds left at the time of the conclusion of the payment of the outstanding debt, those funds would roll over to the city to use for activities within the Quantum Park area until they're expended or rebudgeted. So those are the changes. And then, as I indicated, there is a pending board meeting. So if the commission wants to take over its activities now, we would need to change in Section 5 of the ordinance when the ordinance becomes effective or at least certain provisions of it take effect. So now back to this issue of the outstanding budget. And perhaps, I don't know the exact numbers. I wasn't at that meeting, and the budget was not published online that I could find. But my understanding is, is that there was some discussion at the board meeting about any funds that would carry over, be redistributing or refunded to the property owners within the park. That would not make any funds available for the city to inherit, to continue on with the maintenance obligations of the park if that were to occur. So that needs to be taken into consideration. If the current board members sit through the meeting to conclude the budget, then essentially, they will control that issue, and the commission will not have any control over it. Either the funds will be there, depending on the outcome of the budget hearing, or they won't be, and you will have no control over it. So there seems to be a benefit to the commission taking control of the board tonight by passing the ordinance as amended.
And so whatever they had before is a recommendation to this board, almost?
Yes. The whole concept was to wind down the activities of the district so that you don't have these two levels of government operating within the park, the first level being, of course, the city, and then the dependent district with this crossover of fees and expenses. The staff has previously indicated that it could take over the maintenance responsibilities of the drainage system, the ponds, the park, more efficiently than was being done and at lower cost because the city staff is already working on those kinds of issues under their current salaries. There's nobody being hired to do that. The same would be true for legal services as well.
And then the other aspect of it is, is that if, what is it, this district is to sunset in September of 2020?
That's what is proposed in the body of the ordinance. It says the purpose is to fully sunset the district on or before September 30, 2020. I think that date was originally established as the sunset date because there was not a clear understanding of when the debt would be retired. And now, as I understand it, the debt could be retired as early as September of this year.
Okay. And so, yes, Vice Mayor?
So I'm in favor of taking it over immediately, carrying out the intended plan of retiring the debt, and then as a body, this body acting as the new Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District Board, discussing a timeline for the ultimate fate of the district and the assessment because there's, I've said since day one that I've been involved in this, there were three issues to me. One was the lawsuits. They've all pretty much fallen wayside. The debt, I would say inexplicably, but it's very easy to explain, is able to be retired in a very short period of time because the people who are now running the district are actually doing it in a responsible manner. So the debt is gone. And the third component was the park. It's imperative that there be seed money for this park and some maintenance funds for a period of time. If we were to dissolve the district outright, that park will never be built. And as we talk in a previous agenda item about parks and expectations, this is a park that has been promised for decades, and the city has not put one penny into it. And we don't have to put one penny into it if we wind down this district in a responsible manner, still cutting the fee that is being assessed to current property owners, which has already been slashed in half, again, as a subsequent action of the new board, which is doing its job and doing a responsible job at that. I think if we're ever going to see this eco-park that is adjacent to a residential development called Parkside, yet the park does not exist yet, we have to plan for it financially. And I think that that can be done based on even reducing the current assessment, once the debt is paid, to a more nominal amount per property owner for a limited period of time to put that money away for that park. I just, the city will never find the money necessary for this, and if we don't pay mine to it, we might as well just abandon the idea because you can't just come up with a couple hundred thousand dollars out of nowhere. It just doesn't happen. So my recommendation is to take over the board tonight, carry out their plans to retire the debt in approximately one month's time, and then as a board, deliberate on an appropriate wind-down period accumulation of finances to seed that park.
Jim, do you need a date certain for the sunset of this district?
I think you could leave the date as stated, the 2020 date, September 30 of 2020, because the commission could always come back and extend that date if you need to by further amendment. But with respect to the park, if you go back to the purpose section, we might need to add some additional language because right now, the purpose ends up being limited to retiring the outstanding debt, levying the advalorem assessments necessary to retire the debt. I think there you might want to add a provision and provide seed money for the park or words to that effect, and then continue on, transfer and dispose of any assets.
And if that...
It's clear that some, that one of the remaining functions of the district would be to deal with the park, planning and development maintenance.
And I would make that recommendation if that's the will of the board?
I'm ambivalent about using or adding that discretion. I think the residents of that area, if they so choose to be, to have a levy raised on them for funding the park, then they can express that, and I think we should at least give them the courtesy of seeing where they stand on that. It is, for right now, they know what their tax or their levy, whatever, that they're paying. They know what it's for. They were not informed that it's going to be for a park. So I believe we have a duty to inform them of that and to see if there is a general consensus among the residents that live in that area, if that's what they would like to be, if they'd be in favor of that.
All right. Commissioner McCray, then. Commissioner Pensilga, then back to the Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Ever since that Quantum Overlay District was established, that park was discussed, and the residents out there, they are aware that a park's supposed to be out there, and the city was trying to do all that they could. So I'm just standing to see what the residents want about a park. It's not for them really to decide. The city has already promised it to them. We just need to deliver.
Commissioner Pensilga?
Yes. As the district forerepresentative, yes, the residents are aware of this eco-park. It's been in the works for quite some time. The only thing I would like to add, and I am in full support of the comments made by the Vice Mayor, the only thing I would like to add is, when the time comes to determine whether or not we need to continue to levy these taxes for the park creation, that that conversation be had with the residents of QPOD, of this region. Other than that, full support.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, and to those points, as was stated, I've attended QPOD meetings, I've attended POA, Property Owner Associated, meetings throughout the past three and a half years. And as was detailed, the park has been promised as... And as was detailed, the park has been promised as long as the district and Parkside, its namesake, has been there. I have no problem, per Commissioner Penzerga's request, that when we do, if we do get to that point, to notice the residents and ensure that there is some sort of community meeting. But, but the residents are well aware, anyone who moved into the residential communities, if they're questioning why their community is named Parkside, this would answer that for them. And even if we perpetuate this district for a finite period of time, we can still dramatically reduce the existing assessment, which, again, is already a 50% level to what it had been, and it actually been increased in recent years because the individuals who are running it had invited additional litigation that caused them to raise the assessment to fund that litigation. So it's, to me, this is kind of an off-ramp where this one final promise is delivered on, and the liability or the fees that are assessed to these residents continues to go down because it already has, and it needs to continue and taper off. So I see no reason not to proceed as has been planned for what I believe was almost 20-odd years now.
Commissioner Penzerga?
I just have a question. I guess Colin, you'd be the best person for this. Are there any assets under QPOD that perhaps after the debt has been paid, that we can dispose of for a profit? To consider the possibility that we can, what's the word, reimburse or compensate the residents? Is there any assets that would be open, would be able to be compensated?
So that question was asked by the board also at the last board meeting, which was Thursday. The same question was asked. Is there any assets that have any value that could be disposed of to accept that value? The only assets that are left to the board are stormwater ponds, which have no value and have to remain because it's the stormwater treatment for the area, and the remaining Upland Sand Pine Preserve that's required under the, under the regulations to be a sand pine preserve. The other sand pine preserve the district has already disposed of as part of a settlement agreement, and the, but it has to stay a sand pine preserve unless those are transferred, same acreage for acreage, to another area. You could not dispose, you, there is no other area to move the, the sand pine reserve that's still remaining. There isn't any place to move that. So that land then becomes undevelopable, except for as a sand pine preserve or part of the park, which, if it was transferred to the city, it would be part of the park. So to answer your question, there is no land assets that we can determine that are of any value that hasn't already been addressed. The value of it is the open space and the green space for the residents of Quantum Park.
So there is no possibility for compensation?
No, they're actually going to cost us money.
Okay.
To contain them. There's, yeah, right.
You know me, I look for money everywhere I can. And I don't see, I don't see a way that there's, there's value there. The, the, the hard assets, which are the pumps and the sprinkler systems and all that, they have to remain for the irrigation and all that. So you don't sell those. So there really isn't anything left that could be used for developed property, which then would have value.
Understood. Thank you.
So, and I remember when the old board was still on there, and I was, got the proxy from the city and the Children's Service Council to elect the new board for the Quantum Park Overlay Development District. One of the reasons why we were, you know, they were excited is because the park was always, you know, a part of the Quantum Park Development District. You know, there's things that happened with litigation, and, you know, luckily for us is that that has ended, and we'll have a final conversation about that. But, you know, the, the way that I see it is, is that, yes, we need to have that conversation about having the park included in this ordinance. And then I'd like to still have a date certain, just so that everybody who is in the Quantum Park knows that the assessment isn't going to last forever, rather than us being able to change it for one more year, two more years. I'd like to put it as September of, September 30th of 2022, so that they know that the next year is, they're not going to be taxed, that special assessment for that 2022, 2023 fiscal year. Yes?
And I would support that. And based on if the direction we go is to try to wind down the fees to get some seed money together, and we find out that that can be done in, in a shorter period of time, that allows this flexibility to, to reduce the, the period for sunset versus right now, where it's set at 2020. If it's not in the current fiscal year coming up, then we would have to go and extend it. So I'd be in favor of the 2022 date with the expectation that once we, if we go in that direction, price out costs for the park, that we determine if that's the appropriate date, or if it can be done sooner to add more relief to the residents.
All right. So do you need a motion to amend the ordinance?
Yes, a motion to adopt on second reading as amended with the inclusion in Section 5 of the language, adding the, the duty to take action as required to for the future development and maintenance of the park area.
And the date certain of September 30th?
That already appears at line 51 and 52. The authority of the board would be to take necessary action to fully sunset the district on a date on or before September 30th, 2020.
Two.
Twenty twenty-two.
Twenty-two. That's where the change would be.
Yeah, 2022.
Twenty-two.
Per se. All right. So may I have that motion?
Sooner.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from the, the board? Any discussion from the audience? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Chuck Girardi. I own a building at 2400 Parkside in, or 24, I'm thinking Parkside, 2400 High Ridge in District 4. I just want to respond to a few different comments with regard to the money that's potentially in the district. And I want to comment on what Justin Katz, I sit as vice chairman for that committee, and I'm also on the Property Owners Association. I'm the chairman of that, and I'm also the treasurer for the POA. And I take no compensation, zero. And I implore you to shut the district down now. And I have, I have a lot of questions. Who voted for the park? Everyone said that we, did anybody vote for the park?
Nobody was, most people were not here 20 years ago when it was created.
Was it voted for nine years ago?
Sir, let me-
Sir, you're here to make comments. We weren't here when the, the district was developed, so we don't know of any of that information. So I believe you would know because you were, you were there. Was there a vote?
No, I, I wasn't here at the time that people, it was way before. I think I bought my building in 2008, and I think it was in 2005.
Yeah, so the, the QPOD, and Colin might have a little more knowledge or history on this. The QPOD has spent a tidy sum of money already on plans for the park. So at, at some point in time, whether by virtue of allocating those funds and getting those park plans put together, or prior to that, in the original inception of this park, I know it's evolved over time now to include everything under the sun. It's not just industrial. I'm confident that, yes, that it's been a plan, that land has been earmarked, and had not, it been for the mismanagement over the years by your predecessors, this, this could have happened a decade ago.
I agree, but do you realize how much money they wasted just on getting sued? That's why this thing should be shut down. And if people want a park, make it a referendum in the community, have a vote, because there's many people that I've discussed in both Parkside and Canterbury that don't want the park. They don't want to pay those assessments anymore. There's a lot of people that are retired, they're on fixed income, and they want as much money back as they can, and they don't want to be assessed anymore. And I think if, if you're going to have an opportunity to vote on this, our lawyer, to my knowledge, we have a lawyer at the district that did a nice job of shutting down the Olin lawsuit. We had to give a piece of property away to do that because the district was so mismanaged. But what I'm saying is, I think this needs a lot more further study and find out if the residents really do want the park. Everybody on the board was elected that's there now, and I think it's unanimous between those people on the board that they want to shut the district down. So don't continue, I mean, I implore you not to continue to assess the people in that district, especially for the residents of Parkside and Canterbury, because they're, they don't, everyone that I've spoke to, and we have a resident of, Colin, Therese is where? Is she a resident of Parkside or Canterbury?
One of them.
Okay. And she's against further assessments. So you're assessing people that don't want assessed. I think you're, because of nine years ago, they wanted a park. And there's some travesties that have gone on, and you know, Justin, you've been there. Mr. Penzerga, I've never seen you there. It's in your district.
He's new.
Mr. McCray, go ahead.
Mayor, can I interrupt for one second?
Yeah.
Subject matter of the assessment is not a matter before the city commission.
Correct.
The, the city commission, until you take action on the ordinance, has no authority over the budget or the activities-
Correct.
Or the plans of the district itself.
Who has no authority?
Relevant to that.
This, this board. So, Mr. Girardi? Basically, our determination tonight is whether to remove the current board of directors of the, the Quantum Development District and put ourselves there so that we can end the, the district.
Yeah, but you want to end it in 2022. We should, we should have ended it yesterday.
And that's the thing. That is something that we have the ability to do. So, you know, the, the situation is, is that you're the only one here speaking, and, you know, to, to end it in 2020. We've heard multiple people over the years-
I think you should have-
Excuse me, I'm not finished yet.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. And so with that, this is the determination of the board. You have the ability to persuade us of your arguments. You can, may ask us questions. We don't necessarily have all the answers. But this is, you know, this is not necessarily a discussion of what is going to happen in the board because we don't have the ability to discuss what happens on the board because we don't have that authority.
All right. Wouldn't you at least think it would be worthwhile to invite the existing board here so you can hear what their opinions are? Those people were elected. So I guess-
I mean, you know, and that's the, the whole situation is, is that we're, you know, how do you elect them? Because there was that lawsuit as well. Does it one person per unit, or is it one person per, you know, acre?
Jim, you can comment on that. I think it's been determined, there was a declaratory action, that the old way of determining is one vote per acre. Is that correct, Jim?
That's correct.
Okay.
The, the concept of allowing every individual property owner within condominium units and the like was, was rejected as part of the settlement of that part of the lawsuit, which we commonly refer to as the voting rights count of the lawsuit.
And so that's the thing, is that we represent the, the residents and the businesses, but we give one vote per person, not necessarily one vote per acre.
I, I don't understand your point. I think you should listen to the existing board, get a full understanding of the history of what's happened. Also, at least at a minimum, go out to the public and get a referendum if they even want a park, because it's expensive, and they're continuing to be assessed. If the individual, if the individual condominium owners aren't assessed, their association is, and it just falls back on them. And I've spoke to many more of those people than I believe you have. We went over there, and we're still trying to battle, we're still trying to, to, to close the Property Owners Association, but we have four different lawsuits. And the only reason why it's in existence is because we have lawsuits and we can't shut it down.
All right.
So what I'm saying to you, I don't think you have enough information at this juncture to make a decision.
All right.
I think I'd be more than willing to go back to the board, give us an hour to go over the history, okay, and also make sure that the residents really do want a park and want to continue to pay those assessments.
All right.
I don't think you, I don't think you have that referendum.
All right. Well, do you have any further comments from the board?
I, I have some, I have some questions.
All right.
When's the, when's the last time anybody on the board has polled either the business owners?
So we are not on the board yet? So we haven't done anything yet?
Well, there's still residents in the city. You have authority.
So, excuse me, Mr. Girardi.
Mm-hmm.
I'm going to let you ask your questions. That's one of them. Do you have any more?
Well, I didn't get any answers.
Yeah, we don't have an answer.
You don't have an answer?
No.
As an elected body to represent the residents of the city, we don't engage in direct democracy on every single decision that we do. So that would be my answer. That-
Okay.
This park was always envisioned to exist.
Yeah, but the park was how many years ago?
That is a fact. There are plans that have been drawn up. We will consult the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent Board when this body pursuant to this hypothetical vote becomes the board. So I, I respect your position. I've worked with you for the past couple years, trying to help deal with this mess. This is a promise that would be a punctuation point of travesty on a long list of travesties that this district has engaged in if we deny the intended purpose of this land for the past however many years, a long time.
I still think you should poll those citizens at both Canterbury and Parkside, see if they actually want the park.
All right.
You want to say something, Ty?
Commissioner McCray, Commissioner Romulus, I'm sorry.
Mike, I'm first?
Yep.
Just as a point of clarification, the assessments, were they intended for the park, Jim? Or whomever can answer this specifically?
I don't know.
I do. No, they weren't intended for the park. They were intended to get a higher level of service in the community for the businesses and the residents of Parkside and Canterbury. And that hasn't happened. We've got nothing.
Thank you. So, again, to restate what I said earlier, which Mr. Girardi seems to be emphasizing here, the assessments that were being assessed on these residents that live in this area was not for a park. I'm not, I'm not disagreeing that a park should come. I'm just ambivalent about whether it should come in this manner, and whether we should take over this responsibility of assessing, continuing this assessment to now build the park. I would prefer that we get an open line of communication with residents in the area, and if they agree to this, then by all means, let's continue the assessment. And yes, I know that we've saved them a lot of money already, but at least we would have willing, willing people doing this, paying this assessment, and rather than just us imposing our will because we want to see a park built. That's all I'm simply saying, and I believe that there will be other people who feel the same way.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Just, just one point of clarification.
I'm sorry, you don't have the floor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I really thought I had covered this earlier, but I mentioned earlier that if we do need to continue to levy taxes, if we are the board, then we first must have a community input meeting. I thought we had said, I had said this earlier, right? We need to gauge what the current sentiments are of the residents. And that was my intention in amending this idea by having a community input meeting first. Should we even have to continue levy taxes at all? Perhaps we can get the park without levying any more taxes. Perhaps we do. That's a time, you know, that's the conversation we'll have another time, but for sure, I want community input. Period.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
Am I permitted? Yes?
Yes.
Colin, we do also have an outstanding FEMA claim, which has been pending. Colin, do you know how long?
I, I would, again, Mayor, this is-
I mean-
It's the business of the-
I, I understand, Jim, you know, Colin, if you could answer the question?
I, I would, I would make-
If you advise against it, then I'm sorry, we-
Why can't he answer the question?
Because our attorney said that he should not.
Okay, well, fine. I have personal knowledge that there's an outstanding FEMA claim, and I'll, I'll produce that information to the, to the commission, if you'd like me to. There's an outstanding FEMA claim. I think it's-
Vice Mayor? I'm sorry, but is that your final comment?
I'd like to listen to, why are you trying to cut me off?
I'm just trying to ask you, finish all of your comments or questions. If there's a question we don't, can't answer, we can't answer it.
Okay. I'm, I'm finished with that particular comment. Commissioner McCray would like to-
Excuse, no, no, no. We're going with you, and then we're going to go to the board. So you're going to have to be able to speak all of your comments now before we go back to the board.
Well, again, I, I'd like to emphasize what Commissioner Romulus said, that it's absolutely essential that you poll the community, poll the existing board, get the history of what happened in order to make an intelligent decision, an informed decision. And also, you know, it's been nine years or beyond when that park was first, the first idea of the park. I don't know if that's still the sentiment of the community. So is that, is that my last comment you're going to allow?
I'm in favor of that.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Vice Mayor, do you want to have one last comment, and I'll go down the line?
Yeah. If anyone in this room can say they have not stood here and listened to resident of Parkside Charles Cantor every meeting for four years, pretty much, come in here and cite the original intent of that land, again, that the residential community is named Parkside. If we're talking about the original intent of the entire ordinance and the district, there was never supposed to be any residential in there. There was never supposed to be any commercial in there. It was supposed to be entirely industrial. So to hang our hat on the original intent, ignore decades of actual activity, which included the commissioning of plans for a park, to now say that we need to poll or survey the residents, again, we're a representative democracy. We are elected to make decisions. We have not polled the residents on a single issue in the past three and a half years up here, because there has been no ballot question of any kind. So I have no problem, as Commissioner Penzerga said, with a community meeting to gauge their interest in what that park should be, but it is, it is a fact that this park has been planned for some time, that the original Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District plan has been deviated 100 ways from Sunday, and that to deny that this plan has been in motion, it's an attempt, and again, I've worked for the past couple of years with Chuck, and I respect him, but we need to do right by the residents who have already invested tens of thousands of dollars, if not over $100,000, in a plan for this park. The money's already been spent on the plan. We can look at that. I just, this is the intent, and I reject any assertion that this is some brand-new idea, that this park has never been vetted before, that it's never been discussed before. The Quantum Park Overlay Dependent District Board has voted on this issue a number of times, and we are, by virtue of this vote, going to become the Quantum Overlay Dependent Board, and it will be our decision at that point. Again, I respect the dissent on the direction that I would like to see this move, but we are voting tonight on an ordinance that allows us to become the board, which means the nonsense that transpired over the years can never happen again, and to decide whether or not we want to fulfill the promise of that park. And anyone who's interested in the park plans, which have been sitting there for years untouched, can ask the Quantum Park Overlay Dependent Board to furnish those documents, because they are public record. I've seen them at many meetings. If you go to the office where the Quantum Park held their quarterly meetings for the past so many years, there has been charrettes of the entire park, including the specific park we're talking about. So I would like to move forward, you know, and pending further comments from the board, I'd like to call the question.
We do have a motion and a second. These are final comments. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Katz, I'm going to go ahead and agree with you. I've been sitting up here like for probably 13 years, 14 years, and ever since I've been up here, except the few years I was not up here because of term limits, we have always talked about a park. Charles Cantor has always came before this board and said, when are we going to get the park that you all have promised us? It was originally planned for industrial-only, and we got all these other developers coming in, and it got all out of whack and everything, and we're getting now control. And my take is that, you know, let's continue with the plans that we have, and if the citizens want to come in and say something, let them say something. But for somebody that's sitting up here who's new and don't know the history of the Quantum Park Overlay District, I know the history. That park was promised. Charles Cantor, been up here, you could check your records, I'm just saying for almost the past 20 years, talking about when are we going to get our park. And for somebody to come tonight and say that they don't understand and people don't want it, you had a lot of people that moved in, moved out, but this was something that was, when this district was put in place, that park was stated, that that would be a park and quantum park. That's my final comments. Thank you.
Commissioner Romulus.
I just want to see proof, whatever this evidence is that exists that shows this, whatever, you know, I asked a question to our city attorney, did the original assessments include the building of a park? And that answer was not answered in the affirmative. So I just want to see proof. I would like to also hear from the residents that this is the direction they want to go in, and whether they want to continue being assessed to do this, and they're in agreement with this, or whether they just want to call it a day and be done with being assessed, and this isn't the direction they want to go. It may prove, and what you want, Vice Mayor Katz, that, yes, this is something that we will move forward with, and the residents want to be assessed for getting this park built out and get what they were always expecting. Or it may be the opposition. So I would simply just like to see it. I think for a very long time, the residents of this area have had assessments imposed on them for things that they weren't expecting, and I don't want to be another board that perpetuates that same problem. I would simply like to say that we listened to the residents and we respected what they wanted out of this, out of this assessment and out of this whole conversation and this transition. I'm not opposed to ending the QPOD as it is and transmitting power over to us. I am opposed, though, to the amendment that is being made tonight in this motion that stating that we will continue to assess with the intention of building a park. That I'm not in favor of, because that's not what, I don't think there's very clear language right now that states that this is what was the intention. So until I get that or I see that, then I'll be in agreement with this.
Commissioner Penzerga.
It's not clear to me that we have to continue assessments to make this park. This is kind of a hypothetical. There's a way to make this park happen, perhaps, without continual assessment. So let's put this hypothetical aside. I want to move forward. The first step is gaining control. Then we're going to pay the outstanding debt. We're going to shut down QPOD, and then let's have that conversation with the park. Let's take this step by step. I'm looking forward for these assessments to go away. I'm looking forward for QPOD to shutting down. And as much as I want the park, and I do, this is something that the residents have been promised. I've seen the original documents. I've received binders of them. But right now, it is not certain that we even have to continue any taxes at all to make the park happen. We're arguing over a hypothetical, but the first step is gaining control so we can shut this down.
All right. And so, Ms. Gibson, we have a motion and a second on the amended ordinance?
First, on the motion to amend, and then if the motion to amend passes, then on the ordinance as amended.
Okay. So I need the motion to amend.
Excuse me, Mayor, do I get a final comment?
No.
It's unfortunate.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. And so all those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Discussion.
No. We're done with the discussion. We called it.
I'm asking for clarification of what the amendment is. I need to know exactly what we're voting on.
Okay.
Okay, the amendment is as stated as the second amendment, excuse me, the second ordinance that's provided in your agenda package. The changes were, in addition to what's shown, to Section 5, to add the clause, and to, this goes to the powers, to take action as required with regard to future development of the park. And the date in line 52 was changed from September 30, 2020, to 2022.
All right. Waiting for your vote.
So this does not include anything about the park or assessing, continuing to assess for purposes of building the park?
Now, the issues regarding what happened to the park and what is done will be taken up by the board at some future meeting. This is only to transfer the authority of the board to the members of the city commission. So there's work to be done as the board, with the commission acting as the board in the future, including the adoption of a budget, which will provide at least perhaps the first vehicle for the property owners to provide their input.
Thank you for the clarification. Aye.
All right. Now, may I have a motion to approve the ordinance as amended?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion from the board? Sing none. We have a roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Commissioner McCray?
Yes.
Commissioner Romulus?
Aye.
Commissioner Penzerga?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vote is 5-0.
All right. Jim?
All right. Staying within the boundaries of Quantum Park, there is still a pending lawsuit, Olin Properties Corporation Secure Holdings, Inc., et al., versus a number of parties, including the city. Those cases have been winding down, but there are still some outstanding issues that I would like to discuss with you as the commission in a private attorney-client session. The court has established a date for the next status conference in that litigation for the week before Thanksgiving, so we have plenty of time to have that closed-door session. I think we'll need about a half an hour, and I would recommend that you get through your budget season, September, and schedule the attorney-client session for the first commission meeting in October, the half an hour or 45 minutes before the commission meeting.
And so that'd be?
October 1st.
October 1st.
October 1st.
And that's, okay. Let's do 45 minutes, just so that we could have an extra 15 minutes if it goes a half hour.
Or 5:30?
You want to do 5:30?
5:30.
Okay. All right. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Before you guys leave, I'd like to put some things on future agenda. First is our workforce housing ordinance. I think we need to revisit that. We received a master plan modification for our Boynton Beach Mall, and that is not currently in our workforce housing ordinance. So I believe that it's something we may want to look at in the future. The other thing is, we need to put on the future agenda items, is the Sarah Sims event restrictions. The other thing is, I received some resolutions from Miami Beach that I'd like to bring in front of the board for their review. And the last is that I'm under, I've been notified by FPL they're starting to underground wires. Part of the things that I learned about the Florida League of Cities is that certain cities use what FPL was going to spend as a credit so that they can do more than what just FPL was doing. And so I'd like to have a discussion about undergrounding wires. None of these are imperative to be on next meeting, and based upon Jim's comments is that I'm happy if we wait until October. Yes.
You say Miami Beach resolutions. What were the, what are the specific topics of the resolutions?
One was, I believe two of them were regarding the environment and electricity, and the other one was reproductive health care.
Okay.
And so, does anyone have any objections to that?
I haven't read the resolutions. I can't make an opinion.
So I just want to know if it's okay that I bring it on as new business. And so I'd like to have that as the procedure, that, you know, when we have sort of things that we want the board to go, we put on the future agenda, and that way staff can review and make recommendations.
Is there a mechanism that we could see what these resolutions are prior to choosing to put them on there? Because I personally don't want to agree to put something on and then read it and not support it, and if I had a chance to kill it before it got on, that would be my preferred avenue. Is there a way that the mayor can provide these resolutions?
Would that violate sunshine if I-
No, you could distribute through the email system or hard copies, copies of any documents to the commission. The commission is urged not to respond to the email, of course. It's only for review purposes.
And so that's the whole point, is that whether, you tell me, is that, I can just send it to them, and then I can ask them again if they would want to have it on the agenda?
Send it, ask them at the next meeting whether to add it to the agenda.
And I'll do that for the resolutions. As for the underground wires and Sarah Sims and workforce housing, is that okay if we put on future?
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm in favor.
Okay.
I have a question, though, if whatever the mall has already submitted, if we were to do anything to the workforce housing ordinance at this point, would the mall be grandfathered in under the existing language?
It would be.
Okay. And so any site plan that they approve after the master plan?
Yes.
Okay.
Once they're in the hopper from day one, they're covered under the existing code provisions. If you change the code provisions during pendency, they're grandfathered in.
Okay. But if they want to be as part of the new workforce housing for increased density and height, then that's something that they can, because we have an incentivized workforce housing, not a restriction-based.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
All right. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you. You kept saying Sarah Sims workforce housing.
No, so there's three items. Sarah Sims events, we need events that go there. We need to have a discussion of what can and cannot happen at Sarah Sims Park.
Okay, I'm good now.
We're going to bring a use policy back to you.
Yeah.
The second item was a workforce housing ordinance. Because it's incentive-based, I want to know if we can extend that opportunity to the Boynton Beach Mall.
When you said, you said Sarah Sims and then workforce housing, it all went together.
I'm sorry. And then it's, and then the last is having our staff speak about, to FPL about undergrounding wires and seeing exactly what we can do with the, you know, with the money that is being spent and being paid by our residents to best utilize that. All right. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All right.
Yes.
Yes, adjourned.